Yeah, you're gonna go ahead and open up your work session. Please silence, shut off your cell phones and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Schulberg, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or leasings?
Yeah, I have one addition. It's a legal counsel RFP discussion.
Okay. Alrighty. Um. So we have a timed item, uh Brad Kane from Water Creek. Is he gonna be joining us on video? Have you heard from him?
I thought he was gonna be on.
Okay. I've gotten lost. Yeah, we have the our uh legislative president, we have Jake Greer. Uh which one you guys wanna go first?
If I have a stack, I'll go first.
Okay, yeah.
I have two items, um one being a goose neck trailer. A second item being a rock purchase for a resource locally and I brought because I submitted the first uh sheet using rule number, thank you, eleven. Um this is rule number nine. Now I'll describe that here to give you. Which one would you like to discuss first?
Um. Let's go ahead and let's have some discussion about the rock purchase.
Okay, so on Thursday when I um sent this in, the rock pit purchase uh from Dead Man's Pit uh with Knife River to use rule number eleven, rule number eleven talks about contracts less than seventy-five thousand as you guys know. However, it also discusses uh criteria where I need to have three um quotes, um either solicited or unsolicited quotes. Um it's it's not possible for me to get free quotes from a hypothetical situation for many contractors to crush in a pit that they're not gonna be invited to crush into, so um I am using rule number nine, which talks about my actually put it on there for you. Um shows that the exemption will result in cost savings and also shows unlikely that it'll encourage favoritism. So this purchase agreed medium chip rock and three quarter ten not to exceed seventy-five thousand from Knife River out of this Dead Man's Pit over here. Crusher's already in place and the road department will take financial advantage of minimized mobilization costs, volume, production, cost savings, and this material will meet requirements of Lake County specifications for surface treatment. So one caveat to this is the material that they are mining there is waiting an approval for the state certification. So this, I'm asking, I'm telling you guys and asking you guys, this is also in waiting for that document too because I've taken a material from that and independently tested it. Knife River has as well. Their tests are then state certified as a source. Um I got a secondary test for durability abrasion. Um to make sure that the, without getting into the weeds too much on the specs, that the basically the wear and durability of this material will meet what we want. Um and it does. But this will be pending that state material certification, which they should see any day now.
Right.
Um so if it just happens not to meet it, you're not gonna win? We probably will not, um because the county, this county historically has always made sure that the material used for surface treatment is a state certified uh product. Now, we have used three quarter ten and a variation of three quarter ten out of local pits that meets durability abrasion and the sulfate test, which is the specification um on some of the jobs and reconstruction type jobs. But we prefer to have it be the state certified material. It's just one more level of approval that is is good. Um but I also included in here, this material is gonna be utilized for our seal seal coat plans in construction season twenty-one, twenty-two, or rather twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four in districts one and two. So it'd be three thousand ton of three quarter ten, two thousand ton of three eights and four, which for lack of a better term is what was been used for our multiple application chip seals. This material is substantial cost savings to the county, both in the cost of material itself, but also the ability to store it on site, minimizing our hauling expenses. The material does not encourage favoritism or diminish public contract because it is, it is or it will be the only certified material being made right now. I did change the rule that I presented up at first, but I think this is probably a better way to go.
So rule eleven requires three bids?
Rule, rule eleven is a, is a, is is a rule that can be used to purchase for less, contracts less than seventy-five thousand, but it comes along with certain criteria and I can't provide to you three hypothetical quotes.
We don't have three credentials.
Cause I don't, yeah, I don't have, I don't know how to do that. Um because it's unlikely that
This is Jim Bailey calling in actually.
gonna hit contractors to do that.
So then what's rule nine?
Rule, rule nine is right here. Actually, I printed it right on there for you and it is the actual
Row, right below there.
Yep, so.
Hey Jim.
Good morning, Mr.
Okay. Sorry.
Um so number one, uh support their word. You can, you can see it there. And uh two and three are the two criteria, so.
Gotcha. So um substantial cost savings and unlikely to encourage favoritism.
A lot of times when we have a crushing contract, we will, we have to immediately remove the material and haul it too. That's why we have so much material down there. Um in this case, the landowners agree that I can allow it to sit on site, which means I'm only gonna haul it once and that's to where we're gonna work and there that is a, it's a man hour thing, equipment thing, tires, all those, instead of moving it twice. Yep, so I've been, we've been trying to, we have been trying to do these type of deals when they're available when like for instance, the, the all summer long, we worked out of uh Shumway's pit up there, same type of deal, where we only, we never moved it until we use it. Major, major cost savings for us because we don't have to haul it twice.
Okay, so.
Is there anything else you wanna?
Uh no, just, just really, just to kinda recap Jim real quick. So we were originally gonna go with this under rule eleven, Jim. Um
Okay.
And then uh based on your email, um and just the inability of us to be able to get three quotes on this, uh we're looking at going under rule nine, being that it um it's unlikely that the exception will encourage favoritism. Um it's also, it's gonna, it's going to result in huge cost savings for us. Um is there any, any thoughts that you have on that?
Um, no, uh you can go to uh under rule nine. The whole point of the exception is you have to allow some flexibility without um uh circumventing competitive bidding. So uh there are all options for us, some fit better than others. So you can go under rule nine if that'll fit better for you than rule eleven. I, I think in this case it does after reviewing it, what he told me.
Right.
Cause I can't, I, there's no way I can get you a hypothetical quote.
Good, okay. I have no further questions. This is the, this helps, so.
Okay. Um okay, we can act on that tomorrow then.
Okay. So, so my second item is um purchase of goose neck trailer. Attached is three quotes um in the description there. And this describes what this trailer is and what, what we plan to do with it. Um this trailer allowed for the skid steer that, the county skid steer that we use uh to basically house or supply all of its attachments. We, we have acquired a lot of attachments for this machine that are all used all the time. And what we're finding is we end up pulling a second trailer um just to take the attachments. So this uh purchase will allow us, um it's a sixteen foot tilt for the equipment, but it's an eight foot flat on the front where we can rack and supply the filling head, tracks, the pallet forks, the buckets, um everything. Um it also makes it much safer that we can hook up to these attachments off the side of the trailer rather than driving up on it all the time. Um if you've ever been on a skid steer without a flat attachment backing off of the film that is can be uh harrowing, to say the least.
That's because you can't see either.
So, so is that why um we're look, we're looking at going with the estimate from uh Elite Trailers sales?
So the estimate, the three estimates, actually there is a lower price, happy just happy trailer sales, which I talked to those individuals. Um they don't list unfortunately, and, and what I did here was get three actual different brands too. So we were trying to compare what's available in the industry. Um Happy has a P and J trailer, but subframe with this trailer is a six inch subframe. Um the one from Diamond K is a, a, a Great Northern trailer. Um and it also is a, only has a six inch subframe. This Elite trailer is a heavier built trailer, has an eight inch subframe and has a heavier um goose neck. I think because of what we plan to do with this trailer, I think the heavier, uh more rigid frame structure is probably going to be best for us over the long term.
So do they have a dealer in Oregon or do you gotta go to Kansas?
We're gonna have to go get it. Um I did talk to the gentleman who owns this outfit and he delivered trailers all over the place and he's willing to meet me um in the event that we can cross paths and I don't have to go the entire way. But even um at going the entire way, um I think, I still think this is a pretty reasonable deal. He delivers trailers to Idaho, Utah, Nevada. Um and so they offer full delivery or they offer pickup or he, we've talked about meeting somewhere.
No, we're not talking about big price difference here. If it's got the right frame, meet the job that you need to do. I think then that's, that's actually a pretty competitive bid.
Yeah, I, I kinda think in evaluating um and even having a mechanic kind of review some of the um things that structurally make this, you know, these trailers different. I think this low trail trailer is gonna serve our purposes pretty well for what we wanna do with it.
Okay. Um, one question. Now you said you went out for different uh, different brands. Do you know if these three bids, do they supply the same brand together or?
Um this Elite Trailer Sales, they only sell low trail.
Okay.
This uh Happy Trailer Sales, they did sell another off brand, but it, the guy told me right on the phone, I told him what we wanted to do with it, he said, you're not gonna want that trailer anyway.
Okay.
Um the Diamond K sells both this Greater Northern trailer, which um we actually have a Greater Northern trailer. It's a bumper full trailer and it is a reasonably good quality. Um but they also sell P and J too. Their quote is more because of the availability, um the way that economy and everything is, they, they're not even sure when I, if I wanted to purchase this from them, that, when I would even get it. Perfect. These other two are, these other two are available um when we pull the trigger.
Alright, we'll act on that tomorrow then. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you for your kind help.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you coming in. Um Jake.
For blessing of the program.
Yeah.
Jake, you're up. Thanks.
I appreciate it, yeah. How are you gentlemen? Johnny?
Mr. Brady?
Good morning.
Um before you is the League Development Council, um also known as Oregon Department of Education grant between uh Lake County and ODE. Um these past two dollars, this is the grant to go to the Lake County Mentoring Program. Um first time I came to talk to you, I mentioned sixty thousand. They have increased our funding. Get the funding based on a number of kids, twelve to seventeen, uh certain percentage. So I think we have one or two more kids than between twelve and seventeen that and they're fully blocked this year, probably within the last couple months. So the money um is allocated towards though like the Lake County Youth Mentoring Program. We as Lake County retain ten percent or sixty-three hundred dollars over two years. Uh the mentoring program realizes fifty-six thousand seven hundred dollars over two years, which equates to about uh little over twenty-eight thousand a year. Um every quarter, it's seven thousand, or excuse me, seven thousand eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents is what they realize. And in order to get that money, they need to do the work, which is conduct juvenile crime prevention assessments for risk need um of views that they are working with.
Okay, so some of them, you say do the credit prevention work?
Oh. Criminal business.
Right.
Well, they
Youth mentor program?
They do the assessment. It's, it's called an assessment DCP, Juvenile Crime Prevention Assessment. Um and it's a risk need assessment. We do them on our kids, on all of our kids that are on probation. Um they do them for these dollars so they, they're able to capture their um their mentors.
Whether they have criminal background or not.
The, the juvenile. Not so much criminal background. It's about family, yeah, history, attitudes, orientation, antisocial behaviors, um substance abuse, whether they're risky. I think there's nine domains that they um look, look at. After you go through the assessment and it's fit you had a score, you're either low risk, moderate, or high risk. Um and they, they, they work with the ment- mentors, the kids, the mentees work with the mentors on those um the high-risk needs.
I've given, what I've given at though is aren't there kids that don't fit any of those categories or would be in the low risk that just need a mentor?
Yeah, there will be those kids. Yeah, there will be those kids. There'll also be those high-risk kids and there'll be some kids that are moderate. Um because I, I don't work with those kids. Um some of our juvenile kids um are in the mentoring program. The ones that aren't, we're not good with those assessments. So I can't tell you how they also fire. I can get some numbers on, um but all of our kids, we share those with the mentoring program. Cause we're, we're helping make those referrals.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good job on getting, again.
Thank you. There will be um because I don't think it, the work really spelt out, we'll be receiving some technical assistance. We're getting the money still, but we'll be receiving some technical assistance around um equality and inclusion. Um we're waiting for that technical assistance from a phone call and here's what we're gonna do and here's what you need to do kinda thing um from Oregon Department of Education. It's hard to it's easy to put that stuff on paper, but it's hard to show how we're um how, how we're in motion that comes to equality and inclusion. Um we don't have people that fit, we don't have anyone that fits that criteria right now that we're working with, both adult and adult. So it's uh, it's, it's welcoming. It's gonna be very welcoming. So we'll be involved with that, I'm on the mentoring program. We'll be involved with that next system. So.
The mentoring program is good because they work with these kids that we see that might be in the juvenile system later. And so this is kind of our way to keep them out of the juvenile system and moving up at risk levels and.
And Jim, Jim Nickle, our youth investment coordinator, he works with some of those same kids in the mentoring program, so they're getting they're getting some extra attention.
And they work with school districts, school districts help us out as far as what kids that they might think are high risk or, you know, are might be moving toward high risk and then Jim takes them up in swing and helps them. So. Absolutely. And he's doing a great job too, so. Yeah, very good job.
Um, sure, good for me. Alright, thank you Jake. We'll act on that tomorrow. So uh next item, do we know if Brad Kane is coming? Yeah. Because Jake was going to ask Brad if he's coming, now Jake just left. So, um. Okay. So uh next discussion we were gonna have actually is a legal counsel um RFP discussion. So Jim Bailey, are you on the line?
I am on the line. I'm not sure what you're referring to.
So we have on our agenda um uh an addition uh that we had this morning before you got on. Um we are, uh it's an addition on our agenda for discussing a RFP, putting out a RFP for legal counsel.
Okay.
So um do you want to be present for that conversation or? It's awkward, I know. I'm kinda dropping a volume.
Uh well, I don't care. Uh uh whatever is more comfortable for you. I think it's totally appropriate to uh
Well, it's definitely a little uncomfortable for me to, to drop this on you even right now on the phone. Um I
Oh, that's okay. One before uh, uh we were having a meeting in Paisley and Ken Gethner had added at the last minute uh something about evaluation of legal counsel and
Oh no.
Okay. It turned out it was something rather harsh, I think, a little overstated.
Well, we're not trying to keep anything from you or anything and it's an open discussion and just a work session, no decisions made. But I wanted to have the, the board to have the freedom to have some discussion on the, on the topic. So.
You know, and uh well, there's two ways to go about it. Uh one is uh that since it concerns me, I think it would be, well, at least in direct it concerns me, it's totally appropriate for you, for me to not be on the line so you have a totally free and open discussion. Um if there's something that specifically uh deals with me um and how you wanna go forward, uh then obviously that's something we can talk about, yeah. But I have no problem with that, so.
Yeah, I know, I, I don't think this is anything as far as something that specifically deals with you. Um this is just um discussion around the RFP, so.
You know, I, I think it's totally appropriate um uh action by, by any political body to you know, consider their options and to decide whether or not they're gonna make changes or how to make things uh different or improve or address any concerns, that kind of thing. So uh you know, whatever you wanna do, I think it's, you know, uh I guess I'll put it this way. Uh number one, I think you probably should have a conversation just uh among the three of you without me on the line. Uh the second thing though is if you have questions about the position in general and my insights into it, um then I'm happy to provide those. Um there are certain aspects of the position that if you're gonna do an RFP, you probably shouldn't know about. Um and uh
But we do have the, we do have the MOU uh uh with you um before us and everything else and we we're not giving, we're not giving you notice necessarily or anything to pay or, um it's just uh, just discussion on RFP. So with that in mind, maybe it would be best that we just have that discussion. And if there's any questions specifically about that position, the board, individual board members can get in touch with you.
Okay, uh that's totally fine. I will give you this one bit of information.
Sure.
One of the calculations that uh previous boards have addressed is, well, two actually. Uh number one is if you bring someone on staff, then you have to consider the total package of compensation and benefits in terms of what the cost would be to the county. Um if uh in also in hiring anybody, uh this probably is obvious, you would have to make the offer such that um someone would be attracted to it in terms of working from a county, whether their presence is required uh often or not, um or if you require somebody local. And the last point is the difficulty that the board has always had in trying to find someone local is conflict of interest. And it's very difficult to find someone who would not have uh the potential, probably likely, numerous conflicts of interest of their local attorney, so.
Correct.
Those of us who don't have any advice I'd offer here, I don't need to be a part of the conversation, they have it.
Okay, sounds good. Um with that, I don't think that there's anything else on the agenda for it, um for legal. Uh so avoid, do you want to, on the
So we, we're gonna have the discussion on zoning ordinance?
Zoning. Why don't we do that real quick, then we'll move uh forward and we'll have the discussion on zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I'd like to have Jim here.
And then, then you can be present for that, Jim. And then
Okay.
And then we'll have that other conversation after.
Okay.
Okay. Uh Darwin, so you joined us um. Uh we're moving on to zoning ordinance discussion. So I know you and Commissioner Albersen had some talks about the ordinance. What are your thoughts?
So real quickly, I'm just gonna give kind of an update for Jim. Um
Sure.
So the, the problem that we're having is like on the north end of the county, um where we have RVs all over the place. Our ordinance isn't specific on what we need to do there. And so um generally, we've been giving them like a seven day, seven day. Um they can stay in their RV for seven days unless they have an active building permit and then they can have the RV, live in the RV until they get their house built. And um so that's where we're at because we don't have anything in the ordinance specifically saying that. That's just what we've been going by. And so we need to fix that loophole so we can fix when our nuisance officer comes on, we can take care of a lot of those problems, especially in the north end. They're on the south end too, but especially in the north end. And what we need to do to address that problem, so.
Okay.
And just, and just add to that too, you know, to live in your camper while your building requires a type one conditional use permit, which is a temporary use permit found in Article um twenty-six, section twenty-six point zero six in the ordinance. Um so that requires notice to adjacent landowners as well and a decision after a couple weeks of, of a comment period. So you know, it's not just, you can go ahead and start doing it if you got the permits, you still have to go through that process. And so um you know, this has been a hot topic for, you know, ever since I got hired and it's more it's not uncommon just to like county. I mean, this happens everywhere. Um some counties have it pretty specific in their code that, you know, camping is limited to a certain amount of time. Um most recent, you know, inquiry was uh asking, you know, you know, if we have similar language to Hardy County, which says, you know, I think it was up to ninety days or four months or something like that, which is in the same time period though. You know, we, we don't have anything in our ordinance that says specifically how long you can camp on your own property. Um you know, on federal land, it's, you know, I think it's fourteen days or something like that, then you gotta move on. So that's assumed that, oh, well, you can do fourteen days on your own property then. Um so you know, it's inconsistently, you know, applied to, cause sometimes I know I hear either Karen or Jennifer also saying it might be fourteen days. I've said for probably eight years now that it's seven out of thirty. Reason I base uh seven out of thirty as, as the mark would go by is um there is a temporary use permit to stay on uh, have guests stay on your own property. And it says seven days out of thirty is the, is the um limit before you need a temporary use permit, so.
They could stay on their property in an RV.
Yes, a guest could, yes. And that, and it specifically says in times um like, you know, fair or rodeos or, or you know, other special events um where, where, you know, it'd be okay, it makes sense. or, you know, other special events, um, where, where, you know, it'd be okay, it makes sense that you can have, you know, guests stay on your property, you know, families come to town, something like that. So, you know, that's the only place in our ordinance where there's an actual time limit, um, described. Um, but it also does say, well, you can't live in it on your property in camper unless you have a temporary use permit. So then you would say, well, you can't live on your property in a camper, you know, again, without land use. Um, and it does, um, just campgrounds alone, the state statute is no more than thirty days in a six month period, um, which is even more restrictive than a seven out of a thirty day, great, uh, which is interesting. So, you know, we need to get something more right if we want to be more restrictive than, than what we've, you know, put in as a practice. It's not, you know, we're written in true policy, so, um, that, that requires, you know, if we're going to do it, um, as a land use, you know, restriction, then it requires notice as well, um, you know, the measure fifty-six notice would, or fifty-seven, I always forget which number for sure, but. That notice would have to go out to, you know, anyone in these zones in which we restrict it. Um, but then, you know, a few, I don't know, it's probably been over a month ago now, um, sent you guys an email, um, on the ORS, um, I think it's four-four-six, chapter, uh, four-four-six, that talked about how you can occupy land, um, and, and if you do, then there are certain requirements and, and, um, was that you have to occupy it, um, in a camper or in a manufactured home, but it has to have water, sewer, power. Uh, so that, that statute has been asked of the LCD, and to my knowledge, they haven't gone back to the planners who have been asking that. Um, and I haven't followed up myself personally to the LCD, but we're all, you know.
So are you thinking that we need to adopt that, or?
Well, it's, it's already state law, so there's just a matter of do we wanna apply it, and I, I don't see how, um, we couldn't apply it directly. And then just say that, you know, as part of the nuisance enforcement program, when we, when we hire someone, that, you know, they would still contact these people and say, hey, what are you doing, are you just here on a tour visit, or are you gonna be here, you know, indefinitely? And if so, if you're gonna be here indefinitely, then we need, you know, evidence of sewer, uh, you know, water and power, uh, which also would include an address, um, which would, which would be, you know, um, you know, again, another fee, another permit that they need to be applying for. Uh, so many people, as we know, are living out there, you know, without any of those services. Um, you know, which raises a huge concern for, you know, DQ, especially for adjoining neighbors who might have wells close by, um, you know, just, you know, overall, um, land, you know, um, you know, quality, you know, of the area. Certainly, you know, visibility, you know, of everything, so, um. To, to or, update our ordinance though would require, uh, you know, a process similar to what the planning commission is going through right now, and a full exception where we, you know, they're gonna give a recommendation to you to, you know, uh, adopt a new ordinance. Um, but again, it goes, notice would have to go out on that if we were potentially taking people's, you know, rights, which at this point, you know, the, the assumption is, is that if it's not written in the law, then you can either do it or not do it, and it, and, and it kind of becomes gray, because, you know, if it's extreme, then you can't do it obviously without land use and us adopting a new ordinance. Um, similar to, say, um, the junkyard, it's not written in that zone specifically, so you, you either can't do it or, uh, you know, you'd have to apply for something like a similar use. If it's, if it's, um, not written in code and, you know, it's in like a pretty general idea, like, oh, I can go onto my property, that's not written in my, in the code anywhere that I can't go onto my own property, then it's assumed and, and understood that, of course you can go on your own property. So camping is similar to that in my mind, that it's their own property, however they use it, if they're not violating a DQ thing, meaning they're not spilling some powder on the ground, then they should be allowed to use their own property, however they, you know, if they're paying the taxes, they're using their property, that's, that's their property, they should be able to do that, I mean, you know, if you had vacant land and you just went out there and sites, you know, were sightseeing, I mean, well. And you use it daily to sightsee, I mean, that, that should be, you know, assuming that that's your right to do that, so. Um, it, it's kind of an interesting situation, you know, building codes all obviously have, um, other rules as well, you know, it's, um, not safe to live in a camper, you know, um, especially, you know, the risk of fire and stuff like that, I mean, you know, the heat, a camper is different than, you know, what you, you know, it's, they're recreational vehicles by title and, and, um, you know, by definition, so, and there, there usually should be limited to recreational, not, you know, necessarily, um, living in it, uh, ongoing, but, you know, it's a, it's a tough thing that we need to figure out, so.
Uh, did you have a question?
I, uh, yes, I did. So when that, so that's an ordinance phase, or are there some, um, rule, policies and practices already in place? Because we see an uptick about in the summer, first the fall, of people wanting to transfer from other counties to Christmas Valley because they bought five acres for five hundred bucks. And we go out to investigate it, there's no address, physical address, there's no water, sewer, or power. And they're saying, this is home, and then we have a fight, I have an uphill fight with that county director on, no, we can't do this, it doesn't meet our living standards. So we're trying to hold our clients accountable, as we try and hold everybody accountable to the same standard. So I think an ordinance would help us have some teeth in arguing that, but we always check with Darwin and or Jennifer Stevens to make sure there's power, sewer and water, um, but we do have clients that would go down the road and pull out, James, somebody's address marker and tap it in their ground, so they have an address, although those numbers belong down there. They're not claiming this address, so.
Yep.
We're trying to work that on our end as well and stay compliant with what's before. We were just accepting them, um, and I, I can't do that anymore because of the same standard.
And, and so our dilemma, there's a couple. The dilemma is, is that we have to protect the neighbors. We also have to protect private property rights. But yet, we can't allow this to go on with three or four travel trailers and kids living in there. They're dumping their sewage next to the wells and blah, blah, blah. And so my, and my thought is, is this, is if you have an active building permit with water, sewer, and electricity, you can live in your RV till you get a house or a home. Problem is, is that some people don't have the money to build a house, and they have to live in the RV. And so, I'm fine with them living in the RV if they have water, sewer, and, um, uh, electricity. And, you know, because we can't tell them, well, since you don't have money, you can't live there, you know? But on the other end of it, if they don't have water, sewer, and electricity, then we have to put a time limit on how long that RV can stay there. Otherwise, it's gonna be the way it is right now, and, um, and so that's where I want to interject from the county, what's required, and so. People don't camp on their property, but they can only camp for a certain length of time, otherwise, we're gonna end up where we are now.
What do we classify as power? Cause there's gonna, there's a lot of folks that are off the grid in the county, so, I mean, or we just, I mean, they have electricity? By any means, they don't necessarily have to be.
I, I think they can have solar power, but they still have to have the sewer and.
Correct, water and sewer.
And again, there's, their water can run off, or solar, I have no problem with that. But I have a big problem dumping sewer on the ground. I have a big problem with four or five trailers with a bunch of kids in there, you know they're not being taken care of, and when I was working for community justice, we had a family of five or six, and the kid that I was working with had a three foot by three foot place in this RV. And we expect the kid to have a good home life, no, it's just not happening, and so. We have to do something, not only on the nuisance end of it, but on the humanit- humanitarian end of it, to take care of these young kids that are in these positions, and so, um.
So Mark, with, uh, Commissioner, with this as well, you know, there's certain zones that allow, you know, um, to live on the property, you know, outright, um, you know, in a, in a home, um, whatever we want to define a home as, um. But then there's other zones like our A-one and A-two zones are exclusive farm use zones, um, that, you know, require either zoning permit or they require a conditional use permit. And so, you know, these five acre lots, you know, that we were seeing selling for almost nothing, sometimes even on contract, where people are just coming out there and squatting on the land, you know, um, in most cases, in a recreational vehicle. Um, it still requires land use to, to go through to be able to live on that property, um, because we have to see, you know, because it's zoned for farming, what affects on farming, and that's going through that non-farm going, um, process criteria, which, you know, we're having a couple go through tonight, you know, which is, you know, highly, you know, um, successful, I mean, has a high approval rating, um, of, you know, for those applications, but it's definitely, you know, something that would still have to be gone through. And so, you know, some, you know, like our nuisance enforcement person goes out and says, oh, I see somebody's on this five acre lot, do they have land use? Do they have building permits, do they have sanitation? And, you know, the answer's al- almost always gonna be no, and then, you know, they have to understand that the first step is going through land use and then sanitation, and then, you know, you know, building permits, at least to get that power, you know, where there may not be power on that property. And then we have to decide what's the, you know, what's an adequate source of power. I mean, a lot of these people will say, well, you know, I've got sewer, it's, it's a holding tank in this camper, so I don't need a septic system, you know? And so I'm just gonna go and dump it eventually. We'll have to have a good tracking system on that if they're going to. I, I remember, um, Robert Keen up here, um, of Dog Lake Lane, you know, um, in our, in an A-three zone, a rural center zone up here, um, just at Drew's, um, went through that same process where he said, well, I, I will eventually, you know, he's getting approved for a private camper, and so he could stay in his, you know, camper essentially until he had the means to put, you know, that sand filter system in, which was twenty thousand plus dollars, um, you know, more than double what a standard system is for a septic, and so, you know, he was able to just say, oh, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'll prove to you guys, the planning commission accepted that, that he proved to us that he's, you know, turned in receipts of having his holding tank in, in his camper pumped, he wasn't gonna be moving it, but, you know, like, the sanitation would come up and pump it or whatever the case was, I think it was, um, another individual, but anyway, so, you, it's just, you know, to, to update ordinance, it's gonna, there, there's gonna be some, you know, a lot of, um, checks and, and bounces that we're gonna make sure we put in place on this, uh, just to make sure that, that people don't just, all of a sudden, they'll assume, oh, I can stay on those, so I'm saying, one, or, you know, I just gotta.
It needs to be clear.
Yeah.
And, and we need to protect the neighbors too, so, in that case, up there is, you build, you spend your life savings building a nice house, and somebody buys the lot next to you and throws in a junky RV, how are, how are we protecting that person that, that worked their whole life to build their dream home? And then we're gonna allow somebody with a RV to come in there and just, you know? I don't think that's right.
Well, you brought up the fact, you know, it's not just about even protecting the neighbors, but also the kids, you know, and the, the, the families that are living in these conditions. We have that as standard.
And that's why essentially we've said that you can't do it. For all these years that I've been here, after Tony West left, um, we've stopped doing that, and, you know, prior, when I first got here, Tony West as building official was, was issuing power and septic to any lot, especially in that Christmas Valley area. But, and because the water district up there was still not giving water to any lot that didn't have a septic. And so that's been their long practice as well, uh, which is, which is great, you know, I mean, where's our water gonna go? We give water, we're gonna go. So it's, it's, um, appropriate that they do that, and we appreciate that they do that, so, um. But you're right, I mean, there, there's some zones that, that it doesn't seem to make sense to allow, you know, campers just to be next door to a, a very nice home, and that's, um, when we made that change, you know, you know, Carl Shumlin was very instrumental in, in pushing the commission to, you know, have me work on this then, and, and, um, kind of, you know, analyze our, our zoning orders to see what we had in it, and at the end of the day, we, we really couldn't, you know, show that there was anything in our ordinance that said, you know, it had to be this way, but we decided to go that way after Tony left, and. Now, it's been working, other than the fact that we just haven't had nuisance code, code enforcement, uh, boots on the ground on an active basis.
Yeah, but if we don't fix it, and somebody takes us to the end, and we don't have it in our ordinance.
Exactly.
That work.
Now, we've sent out countless letters, and, and it's like, well, where's this really Shumlin that says that, so.
And when they say we're Chumlin or says that.
Yeah.
We can't show them why it says that.
Sorry, that's what we say, other than we know that you can't, you know, you know, you're supposed to have septic and building permits if you're gonna live on, you know, on the property. And the ORS supports that as well, it's just a matter of do we wanna really, I mean, we can be more restrictive, and that's.
Correct.
Ultimately what we've been doing, um, and it's to protect, you know, property rights of the, of the people who have invested in their land, and so, you know, to cha- make this change and start saying that, you know, it needs to have a ti- some kind of time limit on it. But, you know, that's, that's a part of, you create a law that you can't enforce, because ultimately, once you get a septic system in place and power in place, we've had this happen where a lot of the single whites show up, you know, and as the approved home, and then years later, that single white's removed, and yet there's still power, water, an address, sewer, and then people will just sell that lot, and then, and then now you've got a camper pulled in, and then that's full time, you know, living out of a camper again. And then that, that becomes a real, you know, headache to try to enforce down the ro- road, because, you know, all the su- all the, you know, systems, and then people complain, cause, hey, how come my neighbors got an address and power and water, and I can see that they've got all these things, and now you're telling me I can't have them? And then, you know, we have to tell the law, you know, that was before our time, or whatever the case may be, it's certainly not something we've allowed in the last, you know, eight, eight years, nine years now, so.
I'm all for getting an ordinance in place, I just, my only question is the seven days, is it enforceable? Uh, is it reasonable? You know, is seven appropriate, should it be ten, should it be fourteen, should it be seven?
The way I, and I told Darwin this earlier, is most people, when they go camping, you don't camp for more than two weeks at a time, you know? If you go on vacation, you're not gonna go, I'm going for a month, and, you know? And so, it's a week or two, you know? But these guys that are pulling these RVs out there and just leaving them, and then just showing up whenever they want, they've become an eyesore, you know, drops property values to the neighbors, turns into a lot of drug use places, um, kids abused in a lot of those places, and. I see a, a deal where somebody falls on hard times and has to live in a RV, cause I did it for eighteen months, and so. We have to have a, a time limit for people to get back on their feet, if they own the property, they have water, sewer, and, um, otherwise, you're just gonna have RVs everywhere, and I feel for those people, especially on the north end, but it's happening out at Drew's too. You know, you go out to Drew's and there, it's a mess up there, and I feel for those neighbors out there, and we just can't allow it to happen, you know?
So, if we're worried about the seven days being too restrictive, and what we're really concerned about is the extreme, the people that move out there with a camper, and they're there permanently, why not we just go along with the state standard of no more than thirty days in a six month period?
That, that's what I'm leaning for.
And that's a campground, an approved campground, so.
Well, they, but, when we adopt that language, we don't have to specify it only for campgrounds.
That's, that's. Yeah, we adopted, yeah, we'd have to adopt.
We adopt that as the standard for your lot, basically, not, you can't camp.
Yeah, so if you don't have water, power, sewer, you're considered camping, and you can only be there for thirty days in a six month period. That's how I.
I, I believe in the Forest Service, so if I was to go camp up at the forest, up, up here in the waters, it's fourteen days, and then you have to move, you can't stay in the same. You can't stay in the same spot. So are we gonna, I mean, is fourteen days too short, too long? The Forest Service and BLM, that's, that's fourteen day standard and that's, it's not here, that's statewide. So.
The thing is, is that we're kind of crouching in on private property rights. That's federal ground, that's public ground. This is, you own that property. You see what I'm saying?
We're just saying that you need to have, you know, there's a standard for, for living. You gotta have, you gotta at least show the attempt that you're trying to get sewer installed. If you're going, whether your power is, your, your, your power's solar, whether your water's gonna be coming from the Christmas Valley Water District or your own well, you need to show that you're making attempts to move in that direction. Now to Darwin's point, what do we classify as camping for the lots that have sewer, water and power, but they're living in RV?
Then I think that they have.
Or three in the whole.
They, they have to have an active building permit, right? That's in my, my mind is if they pull their RV in there, they have water and power and sewer.
And they're residing there.
Yeah, they have to have an active building permit to put something else in there.
So one of our uses, it's not an all zones, but it's in a few of the zones, is a campground, you know? And so, it's been interesting because we say, well, you can't stay more than thirty days out of a six month period. But also one of the criteria is that they have an onsite manager that's available twenty-four hours a day. And so part of that has been where we've approved actual dwelling to go with the, you know, campground approval. This has happened out of the sand dunes, happened at, most recently at the campground that's west of Christmas Valley, just past Oil Dry there, Sam Davis's place. So people have applied for a private campground, they just said, well, you know, I'm gonna have to be onsite the whole time. But, you know, really it's only two or three spaces for when guests might come, you know? It's not gonna be really open to the public, it's a private thing where they'll have some people come. And so, you know, we have approved over the, over the years, some of, of these private campgrounds, but mainly in the A2 zone. What's on the agenda tonight is, is an example of, of a campground being approved in a commercial zone or at least being requested to be approved in the commercial zone, where again, it's only a couple of spaces. So we'll see how the planning commission handles that tonight and maybe he'll come to appeal and use them and get into specifics. But the R1 zone does not allow for campgrounds. It, it does not allow for RV parks and so.
Is that what those pinfields are or?
Well, so the stuff that's in the town side of Christmas Valley is all R1, except there are some stuff obviously on the highway that's commercial.
Yeah.
But the, most of the pinfield stuff is, is not. It's still zoned A2 agriculture and those are the five acre, you know, ten, twenty acre.
The larger lots that are out further outside of the town.
Let's, let's ask a different question here now. So let's say I moved to a piece of property with my RV and I wanna acquire water and sewer. Let's just not worry about electricity for a moment. How long could I anticipate before I can get those permits and get that installed?
If it's on A2 property, well, our practice has been to tell you that you're not gonna get it unless you have, you know, building permits for your home. And so, unless you apply for that, and I haven't been telling people that campground thing anymore because, you know, only a couple of years ago when we were trying to do, I'm trying to grab a hold here, but when, when. I know, but I, I, and trying to bring this into it to understand it more, why we've been saying this is that when, we didn't know about the thirty days out of the six month period in campgrounds before. The LCD came to me in Christmas Valley when Dog Lake Construction was trying to get approval to have a campground off Morrison Lane on Den Law's place because, you know, they got the contract to work on Obsidian Solar Center that's going on up there. And, and, you know, the LCD, because of the opposition, they're getting pointed out, hey, you're only supposed to stay thirty days out of the six month period. So we've been telling people since that meeting, I, I've been really limiting how much I use this idea of a private campground because, you know, if I know it was for just one occupant, I wasn't wanting them to violate the thirty days out of sixty because you're only set at one space. So ultimately, you shouldn't be living in and out of a camper either. So yeah, if someone came in and said, hey, I want, you know, sewer and, and water, I wanna live on my property. The water, for well purposes, if it's outside the town site, is go ahead and do it whenever you want. Hire a well driller, file with the state a three hundred dollar charge to, to get your domestic well while the state. So we always tell them, you can do that anytime you want. I, we just can't assign you the power to it. For the, for the septic in EFU A1 and A2 zones, you have to have building permits for a home. You have to have land use for a home. So we would essentially say you're not getting a septic. Without land use.
But let's say, let's say.
So you're gonna take.
Let's say you're doing everything legally though, in your, do you have the technical ability? How long could that anticipate?
So land use is gonna take two to three months going through the planning commission. And then, and then it's just a matter of how quickly you get building permits to us, which and hire, you know, either put in the septic yourself. So it's, you know, it's another month or so. The people that are quick, realistically, it's taken people six months to a year to get all these permits and everything in line and hire a contractor, you know, get everything set up.
So I, I guess I don't feel seven days, yeah, fits the bill. I really thought thirty days in a six month period felt a little long, but maybe that is more appropriate for the, the time here that we're talking about. For people that wanna do it right, you know, we gotta be looking out for that too.
Absolutely.
And we know there's people, there's, they're kind of snowbirds, right? That, that term, you know, they're coming up just, you know, you know, in the, you know, wintertime or whatever.
A lot of those people though.
When the summer starts, they're usually in the summer.
A lot of those people that are snowbirders, you know, like professional snowbirders so to speak, have very nice campers. And they typically don't just have, they have a, they have a pole barn, you know, kind of style setup that they pull their RV into while they're there for that thirty days.
So, so that brings up another good point and I wish I could hear to kind of talk over some of those too. You don't sign off on building permits, any type of building permit without land use first. And so if you wanna cover over your camper, you're not getting it.
Correct. There you go.
Unless you have land use for a home first, cause the home is the primary use. You're trying to live on the property, you want the primary use established first. A lot of people say, hey, I wanna build a garage first. We say, you're not getting a garage first. Because usually garage comes with just a camper and, and you're not, you know, maybe even pulling the camper into the garage. And, you know, not establishing what your use of the land is for. So, you know, if you're gonna live on the property, it needs to be in a qualifying home. So what has happened probably in the last three or four years more recent, more commonly, is people billing residences in their garage.
Yes.
And, and that works, yeah, shop home and it, and it works. And then a lot of times they're saying, well, then we'll eventually build a home. And then we say, well, then, then the residence in the shop has to go away because they're only typically allowed one home per, per unit. And we don't want them then renting out that, that shop garage, you know, kind of, you know, situation. And that, and it happens. And that's why, you know, allowing the garage shop home to, idea to go in is problematic as well. Because once you've got another home established and then you wanna bring another home, where's the checks on that too and sort of stuff?
So if we do the thirty days within a six month period, is that enforceable? When we get our code enforcement?
It's more enforceable because he'll, him or her will drive by those places and if it's been there longer than a certain amount of time, they're gonna have to check in. Talking with the nuisance officers in Plowth County, they're virtually all called in by the neighbors, all their complaints. And so, if you have a neighbor that's going, hey, this dude brought in an RV, parked it there, we're gonna know personally, you know? And then as things start happening, we're gonna start getting more calls from neighbors saying, hey, can you guys do something about this? Another thought I was having too is these guys that bring out these RVs, most of them aren't even licensed or in their name or whatever, pull them out on a piece of property and just leave.
Sometimes they do it in the dead of night because.
And so, we need to have something in there also that you cannot start a store, an RV on a big empty piece of property. Because everybody's, a lot of people have RVs and so the people with established homes, they can park their RV in their shop or next to, you know, on their place, but these guys that are just going rogue. Otherwise, we're gonna have lots with ten or twelve RVs on it and nothing we can do. And so.
And it, and it, it does become a real problem, understanding if it's just parked there or then stated if it's there continually. That becomes a real, real tough one for me. And, and when we talk about personal property rights, I own a lot, you know, I mean, if I bought, I mean, I own, for example, I own a lot in Princeton down south of Crane, right? And, you know, if I were, had more family out in that area, I might park the camper about next to my house, right there, you know, and just say, hey, whenever I go out there, I'm gonna go and stay in, you know, I'll secure it right, make sure, I'll get sage rats or whatever in there.
It's tied down.
You know, it's tied down, you know, it's secure. And you, you would think that someone should have the right to do that. I mean, it should probably be paying the taxes, you bought the lot maybe for that purpose because it was advertised as a recreational lot, which almost every lot in Christmas Valley is advertised as a recreational lot. They have to correct all the, you know, realtors and everybody that calls saying, we don't have a recreational zone first and foremost. And these are not to be used for recreational lots, especially if they're R1 zone, when you've got the residences next to them. So.
That, that's part of our strategy situation. But then there's also ordinance as state law that if you have a vehicle that doesn't move for a certain amount of time, it's a violation because that way people aren't parking old crappy cars out on places and just leaving them, abandoning them. And so why wouldn't that be the same with an RV, you know?
Do we, Darwin, do we know what our neighbors are doing, can we lie, what their rules are?
Yeah, Harley, can I use one of those? I was, I looked up the email earlier, that, that email that we got a couple of weeks ago. It's, it says, you know, it shall not be considered living on a property that's less than ninety days in a calendar year. So I mean, that buys you three months in the summer or whatever, snowbird and just, and then maybe not even have the services. Which, you know, again, if you've got a self-containing, you're gonna go into a dump site, you know, you've got soil. I mean, I got soil in my camper. I mean, it's like, you know, if you're able to, you know, figure it out, then that's what people do. So Clamette, you referenced, you know, if it's parked a certain amount of days on your own property, it can be a violation. I remember hearing, since we've been using, you know, past, you know, building officials from Clamette that if the replates weren't registered and, you know, with active registration on the, on that camper, then that was a violation as well. And that, that wasn't just the camper, that was any vehicle for that matter. So that'd be, that'd be interesting to go that route too, so.
And we could go that route because if you don't have.
And that's something that a nuisance person can check. I mean, they just, okay, I see the plate, it's not, it doesn't look to be, you know, active. Maybe they didn't replace the sticks, but you can make a check. I mean, there's a way to call and see if those are active or not.
Jim, do you have any thoughts?
The, the first question, well, as a lawyer, you always think about the, the extreme situation, not the people that were trying to do the right thing, but the folks who are trying to get around doing the right thing. So my question for Darwin is when somebody files for a building permit, is there a time limit on how long the rest of the permit is, is good for?
Yeah, a hundred and eighty days. They have to call for inspection within a hundred and eighty days or it'll expire. If it requires multiple inspections, then the hundred and eighty day clock will reset once they have that, that, you know, say first inspection or any subsequent inspection thereafter.
Okay, then, then my concern is for the people who decide, oh, okay. Yeah, let me go ahead and get my, apply for my building permit and I'll pay for that. And then they'll just do it in sequence so that they're always applying or having a building permit without ever really building their home. Is there anything to prevent that?
No, and I've thought a lot about that because, I, I mean, I would, if I was, you know, somebody who knew I wasn't even gonna put it in, I'm gonna say, oh, well, I've got a nice camper. I'm gonna just pay the five hundred and eighty-eight dollars to get a manufactured placement permit. I'll, I'll show I have ownership, I'll turn around and, you know, either hold on to that for nothing and keep it stored somewhere, you know, where I don't want it really cluttering my property. And then I'll just reapply for, you know, this building permit after it expires every six months. Therefore, I'll be able to get my address, my power, my sewer because I've shown that I was gonna put on the home. I think it's a, a very tricky way and.
How about this?
Yeah.
After you apply the first time, the price goes up for the second application if it's the same one.
Yeah, you just keep, and so they're, they're dragging their feet, they're gonna have to pay every six.
Ten percent.
Yeah, because you're not gonna jerk our chain forever, you know, it's cost, it's, it's the time and energy for you guys to have to process all that paperwork and to process building permits and everything else. So it makes only sense for the people, like Jim is saying, the people that are looking to get around circumvent the rules. You know, I would increase the cost.
You know, I like that idea and I think one way to soften it would be to also allow someone to apply for a waiver of the increase in price. That way if we saw someone who was legitimately trying to move forward, but they had something happen that prevented it, they had to reapply, it wouldn't automatically just hit by the increase in price. But they still get applied with a waiver, you know, hardship waiver or something like that. And then that way, we allow for the folks who are doing the right thing, but we also are preventing folks from using the system.
Right.
I like that.
Yeah.
So, you know, updating that pre-schedule change, you know, going, the department may have updated theirs within a timeframe.
That, that's okay. It's all right.
Just know that it can't be instant, but.
That's, that's fine. Six months.
Six months. It's a good idea. I mean, it's, you know, we've gotta keep people moving forward and that, that also pushes them to try to get done quicker. That, you know, living out of a camper while building, I, during the billing, or sorry, during the budget hearings, I, I said, you know, we hadn't been applying that to manufactured dwellings because typically, you know, you've already got the manufacturer going. You're taking it from a lot and you're gonna set it up. Why, why should I issue a temporary use permit, go through that process if you've already got the home ready to come onto the property? Now we're seeing that it's at least nine months to twelve months out because the factories are so far behind on building manufactured homes. People ran into that issue where, well, you know, I've, I've already sold my home, I had to sell my home wherever I was before to be able to pay for this new home getting built. I'm gonna need to stay in this camper for a little while. And yet the building, you know, permit already expires after, after, you know, six months and it's taking over a year to get the place built. So, you know, in those kind of situations, it'd be kind of, you know, maybe harsh to say, oh, well, we're gonna charge you another fee then. But we've been telling people that, well, look, I still can't give you septic or power and address until you've got this permit. And then fully knowing that it's gonna expire before the housing comes, we've been trying to work through that internally. But, you know, maybe it's something that needs to be looked at to say, hey, when is the protected date for this to be finished, built and delivered? And if it's, you know, twelve months out, okay, your permit's good for twelve months. We don't need you to reapply.
And provide, you know, some documentation, show that, that they're actually looking to build.
And most cases they have to prove that they have ownership and the ownership comes in a form of, well, I've got a down payment on this.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's in the factory being built.
And a house that, and, you know, I mean, like, are you putting in a concrete path or anything? Has any of it been started or begun, you know, so, I mean, building a house takes time. We can, go ahead.
So that's sharp. I think this is a great idea to have this, but homeless people are federally, federally protected class and they have rights. There are certain things you can do with their property. It has to be held at least thirty days after it's noticed. And so, and it's everything of value to that person. Like it might not be of value to us per se, even if it's soiled. You can't discard it. So we're going to need a place to store their property so we're not violating their rights.
For what extent of time, you know?
At least thirty days after it's been noticed appropriately. And so I just wanna like make sure you guys, like while you're implementing this new policy, there's this other little caveat to that where you've gotta store these people's stuff if you remove it from like a big heated lot or something because they are federally protected class.
But we do have a county lot up there at the landfill transfer site.
So I'm, I'm glad to bring this one up as well. This one's a tough one for me too, cause Deschutes County, you asked about our neighbor, like you talked about Clamette, Harley. Deschutes actually gave a presentation on this over three years ago at a. The Shutes actually gave a presentation on this over three years ago at a planning director's monthly meeting. And they talked about how they're issuing temporary use permits to live in a recreational vehicle when there's a medical hardship. And, and that brings in this, well, I'm homeless and that's part of my medical hardship. And so, and it's ADA, you know, state, or sorry, not state, but federally protected class of people that can say, hey, I should be allowed to live in my camper because that's all I have, that's all, you know, and. They are having their hearings officer, which we don't, obviously don't have a hearings officer, but it's that next step from a planning director in between, planning director and planning commission. The hearings officer would, would process this and Nick Leelak, who was their previous community development director up there, who's now the county administrator up there, gave this presentation and said, it's taking a lot of time for the legal counsel to go through this process to make sure that they're documenting this right and that this is truly, you know, not somebody that's trying to supplement, you know, you know, the rules, but is certainly someone that, that needs this help, and, and this law should apply to directly. And so, I've got an example of his findings on this and it's, you know, it's quoting, you know, the fair housing amendments to the F H A A, you know, US law. So, it's, it's kinda interesting. We found out about it as planners years ago and we're kinda like, wow, interesting, you know, how do we, how do we start implementing that? Knowing that, you know, it's really tough to, to, you know, dump this on anyone, you know, maybe Council Jim Bailey on the phone or anybody going, hey, let's start processing all this and, you know, you know, and then the knowledge of this isn't out there widely to the public, and there's probably less than one percent of people who know about this by the law.
So, does that, so if they don't have sewer water and power?
But that, so they can claim, like, that they're homeless even if it's voluntary, they're technically homeless. And so, we have to provide services and connections to services. You can, you can evict someone from property and like, if they're not meeting the codes, but you just have to follow the process. And I wanna make sure we build that process in here to prevent a future lawsuit or.
Yeah, yeah, and the language is reasonable accommodations.
And it doesn't say you have to build a shelter or anything to house these folks, you just have to provide information and access. So, say, like, the nuisance person goes and like puts a thing, like a notice on their door saying you have a reasonable amount of time to thank you, or we're going to remove your property because it's not adequately permitted. You will then notice that in the paper appropriately and then you have to store everything that could be of value to that person for at least thirty days. But you just need to make sure you're just following the rules and guidelines of that.
Well, I think that's a legitimate concern, I think it'd be extremely rare, because they already have a place that they can be living. So, I don't think they'd just abandon and let us take it in situations where they never return. If we impound it, then it'd be easy for us to return it to them. So, while I think, Melvin brings up a good point, I think it would be extraordinary that we would actually end up in a situation where we would confiscate somebody's property without adequate notice and without them wanting, acting to get it back quickly.
And I like the idea too about, you, you can't park your trailer there whether you're living in it with a building permit or camping in it, if it's not licensed, it's not legal. And so, ninety percent of those that they pull out there aren't even licensed. And so, that would be one way we can do things.
Probably working for Clamott County.
One of my, is, we could talk about this all day, there's so much to consider, you know, what's working. Everybody's having a problem regardless, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, and we're, we're not alone in this, and I don't, I don't know of anyone that's had a perfectly successful program.
Well, we're, we're probably alone in that we don't have a written plan.
Yeah.
And that's what, we gotta start somewhere, you know, with this. And so, it's gonna be kind of a living document, we're gonna have to add things on as we go, you know?
And I'm not sure why, you know, yeah, I mean, we don't have a plan, I mean, I don't know why over these forty, fifteen years now of land use in Lake County, why we haven't, you know, had a plan and had it really spelled out specifically, but it might have been just, like I said earlier, it might have just been assumed that, well, you can camp in that property.
This Harvey, you don't have a plan?
Yeah, there's, that was that ninety day.
Every day, yeah.
A, a calendar year, I mean, that's a, that's a lot of time though, I mean.
It is.
And. You know, and there are landowners up there that have people, that rent to people, still living out of campers. Josh Schule is definitely one of them, where you just, you know, have people either stay on his own property in one little corner on, on, you know, Timothy and Van roads, that corner, or, you know, now he's, I see these other properties, they're out up there, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you could have people just bouncing around each one, all, all these people were only there thirty days, but now I've got a new person that was there for thirty days.
Right, so, so what is the process from here, Darwin? I mean, we have these ideas that we've agreed on.
So, you can task the planning commissioner, you could, you could take it up yourself, I mean, we don't have to have a recommendation from the planning commission, but if we update our ordinance, there's, you know, a process that, that requires notice, essentially, Measure Fifty-Six. Notice that would go out to all landowners in these specific zones that where you may potentially, you know, alter their rights of use of their property. And that's a, you know, cost, you know, we've done a few of these in the past, like two that I can think of. You know, it's gonna be, you know, five, ten thousand bucks just to notice all the landowners, you know? You know, because it's every landowner, essentially in the county outside of the towns and cities, so. You know, and then you would, you'd have that draft ordinance, have your two required hearings, I'd have to notice the LCD before that. And then they would, you know, accept that at the end of it, as I would say, update your ordinance, so, okay. But again, it's a six month, two year process, that's, again, once you start noticing, you can get a lot of opposition to, you know, one way or the other, you might have the extremes, you know, those that are homeless saying, yes, we want this, and you have the extremes saying, no, I don't want my neighborhood to turn into an RV park, you know?
That's fine, I mean, that's, that's the information we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that makes us stronger, thanks.
My personal belief, just leaving, last thoughts on this, is that any movement towards a home is better for everyone. And if you get a septic and power and address and water, obviously, that is a huge step towards getting a home on the property. And, you know, to me, that's, that's key. And, you know, if people are then living out of a camper and that's the best they can do and all they have, then so be it. To me, that, that should be okay, that's just my personal feeling on it. Because we're, I'm getting calls constantly about people wanting to live out, needing to live out of a camper, that's all they've got. And that's hard to tell, sorry, 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 no, 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 and, you know, it feels a little heartless when, you know, they're trying, and they've been, in many cases, sold these properties, not doing their due diligence, because they don't know nothing about land use and, you know, whoever's selling these properties don't really tell, you know, do your due diligence, because they don't care. You know, and, and that just creates a huge problem for us to, and then it becomes a huge enforcement issue down the road. At least if we're working with people, it seems like it'd be great. I wish, and I think I've said this years ago, probably not in front of this board, I wish there was a program in place where, not that we become a landlord or anything like that, but where we can do small grants to have these, get the septic spout in for these people. That's the, that's the highest cost, ten thousand bucks. Now, water source, you know, they can do a system and a holding tank kind of gravity feed it if they want an active water source. Well, is definitely the best, but that's, you know, ten thousand dollar cost is also, so. You know, looking at at least a minimum of twenty thousand dollars improvement to have water in the sewer, if there was a small home program that where we could say, okay, for the next five years, you're paying off this twenty thousand dollar loan, you know, to, to those who are really struggling, or if there's other grants we could figure out, to me, that'd be the best we can do.
So, are you talking grant or a loan that?
Loan, possibly with grant option, you know, forgiveness of it, you know, depending on the circumstances, but. You know, if they can really prove that they're trying, they're unable to get a job, whatever the case may be, but. I don't know, it seems like, you know, thinking outside the box a little bit, it, it might be nice to spend more money on actually improving the ground by getting septic, at a minimum, wells would also be nice, but a, a septic at a minimum in place. Down the town sites, there's always some water, actually, you know, whenever a ten thousand dollar well expense, you could have maybe just the connection feed to the, the town's water system of, you know, twenty thousand bucks or whatever it might be. So, you know, you're looking at twelve thousand, it's spread over five years, we know that that's where everybody are gonna stay, maybe that's, you know, the best route. You know, tiny home manufacturing, it just seems like, you know, there, there should be options, I mean, I.
No matter how bad the home is, you're still looking.
And I'm, you know, most of the people that buy in our land sale that are investors, they're turning around and selling these things on contract to people. And so, they're, they know that there's a market out there for these, you know, people with lower income to just sell them on contract, it's cheap land. And it seems like they'd also work in that capital where, hey, if they're gonna default on this loan, how about I also get the septic and well put in for them? And then we'll, you know, if they default, fine, then I at least got those improvements back, ready to go for the next guy I sell to on contract. And I've had some of those conversations with our land sale investors that would buy through us, but. You know, maybe there's another entity that wants to take it up by open source, it may not be, but.
Can we send Darwin back to the planning commission with some homework? As far as coming up with some proposals for us, for us to review? That could bring up further discussion, maybe the public could get a little more involved with it and we could hear input. But, but some of the, you know, so that we're not applying a time limit that doesn't factor out with other limitations and whatnot. So that, that they all kind of work together, does that sound good?
And just like the, say, say it's a person, that's all they get for, it's an RV. I, I, I have no problem with that. It's when you get a bunch of junk around your house, causes safety, security, those kind of concerns around that house or the RV. It's, that's a violation, and so if you keep your place clean, keep it safe, I have no problem with putting in an RV. It's.
That's what they choose to do.
When they got garbage piled up, it's no good for any cars, yeah, all that extra stuff. You get, you get roads, you get safety concerns for kids, you know, all that stuff. And so, those other nuisance ordinances will apply to those.
So, I know we're doing interviews this week for our nuisance position.
What's that?
We're, we're doing interviews this week for candidates.
Code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement, or whatever.
Thursday, right?
Huh?
Thursday?
Thursday, yeah, so, you know, as soon as we get somebody in place, you know, the planning commission won't be discussing this tonight. We won't meet again for another month, so by then, hopefully, we've got somebody in place and I can start this discussion with that person as well, so. And see what, what they can also find, I know through, talking with Clamott County.
And tonight is the Blue Marmit Solar.
Yeah, tonight's planning commission was six applications, but also the seventh is Blue Marmit, at seven o'clock.
Got it.
Trying to get through the other six in that first hour, so.
Okay, look. Thanks, Darwin.
Any other concerns, would you make sure we send them to Darwin? You know, any other ideas or concerns, and then that way we can tackle it.
Well, while we've been sitting here, I've been, you know, checking my email and, you know, I have folders, you know, specifically to these topics that, you know, I was able to look back and even look back at what we sent out as that, that code compliance kind of letter, asking for voluntary compliance within fourteen days. We don't actually quote the, the zoning ordinance code anywhere, we just say, oh, it's not allowed in that zone. Like, if anyone knew, they'd just, well, prove to people it says that, because it doesn't say it, so, we definitely need to update it, we need to fix it. You know, there's so many extremes, it's just tough to know exactly what's, what's the best route. I mean, ultimately, we want people in homes and keeping their property clean, but.
So, quickly, on another note, on our solar committee, are they ready to bring us?
No, no, they're not ready, you know, the, you know, we've looked at a couple of examples from other counties on, on, you know, some criteria that we could adopt, some language that we can adopt towards zone norms. You know, we, we haven't had one draft that we've used yet. You know, there's, you know, the, the two examples from Crook and, and Clamott County, they're a little extreme. The committee, you know, is mixed, is, you know, both those who may be opposed, or at least opposed on irrigated ag land, and then there's also, you know, the, the industry, you know, so we have some of them on, on the committee. So, we haven't even come close to, to holding that meeting where we're going down a draft and saying, hey, you like this or not? And this is our working draft moving forward.
I would like to get that draft then sooner than later, because, you know, I don't wanna be, you know, about six months have gone by and I don't wanna go another six months without getting some kind of draft.
So, back in, it was either May or June, I said, hey, we've got a couple of solar projects coming up. New Sun's application is still on my desk, it's incomplete and ultimately not going to be accepted in the form that's been submitted to me. So, but then New Sun, or sorry, but Blue Marmit with E D P R and Jacobs is, is, is timed, starting, which is a process that will eventually make it to your guys' hearing process to, to, you know, approve or project or approve with conditions moving forward, so. The committee tonight is not gonna meet, most of the people that are on that committee are gonna be in the room anyways because of the Blue Marmit application. And at that, you may have said, hey, because we've got these applications coming forward, how about we really, you know?
Buckle down.
Buckle down, look at this, these applications specifically, and put in the right criteria, or not right criteria, but the right conditions. Or just really analyze this right and, and say, hey, it's not beneath the criteria. And, you know, be part of that group that, that really looks at it closely to, to help make a informed decision. And put the right conditions if, if it's moving forward, so. You know, most of the people that, that, again, are on that committee are gonna be there tonight, they're gonna weigh in on it, they're at the open house that Blue Marmit held the other day. But you're right, I mean, you know, we've eight months, nine months now, it was December when we formed the committee last year and we didn't really start meeting until, I think it was January, February. But again, it's a tough one, it's like, what are we really gonna do? And then it's, to adopt anything, it's still gonna take, you know, six months or longer to adopt.
Well, that's, that's why I wanna hurry up, because we get these solar applicants coming, we can't move the goalposts once they've applied, and so.
So, the only, only thing again that, that I wanna bring us back to is that, we adopted that new P schedule, it doesn't go effective till January, but ultimately, the price of ten thousand per acre on irrigated land is a huge deflector to, to someone wanting to.
That's why I put it there.
That's part of, and, and then again, I mean, and I'm trying to explain this to our solar committee, and this is more of an update now, that, you know, a lot of the discussion we've had is that, you know, you know, here are some examples of what we've approved best, here are some of those conditions, here, here are the examples that, you know, most of you haven't realized are already out there. So, we, we've gone through this, you know, eighteen or so different applications of solar in this county already. You know, many projects already built. You know, we, we've got good examples of, of, you know, this isn't new, solar isn't new, we've approved this in the past. We've applied state law directly, we've applied, you know, you know, certain conditions of approval and setbacks and all these requirements according to a case by case basis on the application. Now, if, you know, a certain application came forward, and even tonight, and, you know, those in the room and the planning commission and the applicant and opposition agreed to a certain condition, you know, say a larger setback, you know, from a, from a dwelling, then that's something, kind of objective that can be put in there to help alleviate any negative effects that would happen because of that project. And so, you know, I, I've explained to the planning commission, you know, pretty thoroughly and continually that, that I think there's enough state law out there. Because of that project, and so, you know, I, I've explained to the planning commission, you know, pretty thoroughly and continually that, that I think there's enough state law out there. That, that if we, if we just apply directly, which we have to, we, it would cover all of our bases. The new House Bill twenty three twenty nine, you know, you know, says the county against, you know, may, um, approve a bond requirement. That's something that, that, you know, we're gonna wanna see and, and, you know, there's evidence that at least in the application tonight, but that's, that's, uh, you know. Something that they're satisfying that requirement on with their letter, so.
Well, here we are, uh, we got Blue Marmit right in front of us here, and we don't have anything on a setback from the door. And that's unfortunate, so it's, it's, it's one of the issues that we're looking at, and we have to decide.
And it, you know, the, Clamath and, and Crook County, I can't remember which of the two it was, was a six hundred foot setback. I think it was Clamath, and it wasn't yet adopted, so Clamath's example wasn't adopted. Crook County is the only example I have that we're working out with that's actually adopted ordinance, and they've had it in there, in place for like five years.
Is it six hundred?
No, it's not six hundred, no, um, I don't think it actually has a setback requirement, other than what the zone already has, which our zone is fifty, fifty foot setback. And we've gone less than that with some of like the fencing and the, and the interior roads and stuff in some cases. But, you know, looking at Blue Marmit tonight, um, you know, my nearest home is with over a thousand people, wait, so even a six hundred foot setback. It's way exceeding.
It's a thousand feet now, but if it wouldn't have moved to the north.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, right.
It would have been fifty feet from Roseberry's house.
Yeah, the FSEC process was certainly not that far away, but, but the one that we've gone on tonight, which, you know, you guys have the applications, I'm not sharing anything that you don't already get to see in the applications. But, but, and, and we'll have that hearing process, I'm not trying to, you know, circumvent that process. But, yeah, it's over a thousand feet, I've pulled some measurements of those homes, in some cases, it's, it's more than half a mile away, and yet they're adjoining, adjoining properties. But again, even from the fence line to that house is, is in no case closer than a thousand feet from what I've seen. I don't, that'll be interesting, you know, I mean, and that's where, you know, it is a thousand feet now, I mean, you know. Nobody's gonna be satisfied if they gotta look out there.
It's never enough, probably.
Yeah, it's, it's never, and that's the tough part, it's because, you know, eventually, you know, and, and again, any ordinance that we update has got to go through the process.
Correct.
And, and you may get a lot of opposition, you may not be being approved, because it's, it, you know, it's in a way, you know, taking away from the rights of that property owner. They felt, hey, you know, that, that's extreme, you know, saying six hundred feet might have been too extreme, I mean, it's fifty right now, I mean.
Fifty feet.
Even doubling it to a hundred would, but.
Fifty feet to her to that won't.
Oh, yeah, it's not, it's not far at all, no.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's, it's tough, but.
Anyway. Okay. Um, anything else on these topics? Appreciate your time, Darwin.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
I spoke to Mr. Kane, he was under impression he was speaking tomorrow, so he wasn't prepared to come in today. Also, I asked him to, you know, this Melanie, and I don't know if Melanie has contacted the information, so that I can really just get it.
Okay, our meeting tomorrow is at ten, uh, we have an ordinance hearing at ten fifteen tomorrow, which ordinance is that again?
It's for the, um, concealed hearing license.
Oh, okay, I thought we acted on that already, didn't we?
You have to have two hearings.
Okay. All right, well, we can maybe squeeze in then, yeah.
You wanna squeeze him in, or since we're having all these fires, maybe postpone him a little?
Till the next meeting.
I mean, this ten o'clock tomorrow, we go pretty quick, I imagine.
I'm fine with it, whatever you guys wanna do.
We can put him in at ten thirty?
Okay.
I'm good with that.
That'd be fine, just try to get everything done. Yeah, we can get everything done before then, after the hearing and everything, that'd be great.
If not, we can postpone.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
But there are some topics that would be good to discuss, especially with.
Yeah. I was on the pack call yesterday at noon, and Jake chaired that, and some good discussion on some things. They're still looking forward to solar and everything, so it'll be good to have an update from him.
Imagine if we take them.
Yeah, sure, let's take a, let's take a quick seven, eight, and a break, we'll come back when we're done, I'll just.
Go away.
Um, time is ten forty seven, we'll be back, go ahead and open the session back up. Uh, next item on the list, we'll just run through, does anyone have any questions on the First Amendment legal H A agreement that we have on the amendment? Wait, we knock this, get this out of the way?
Do you guys need an overview?
Yeah, I was wondering if I could get an overview on this one.
So, Public Health is receiving an extra forty five thousand eight hundred twenty one dollars for O I P cares, which is Oregon Immunization Program. And they're receiving an extra eight hundred ninety dollars for the farmers market program, which provides vouchers to fresh produce at farmers markets. And they are also getting four thousand six hundred sixty one dollars for public health practice, T H P immunization services.
Okay, do we know? So through O I P and immuni- immunization services.
Uh huh.
All together, you know, we're talking over fifty thousand, so do we know exactly what, how that money can be spent? I mean, is Judy feeling like, does she know where she's planning on spending those dollars?
Yeah, so O I P is for COVID vaccination things, and the other one is just for regular vaccination programs.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, next up is, uh, application for temporary use of an annual license. So Worthy Brewing Company, uh, they're putting this in for temporary, uh, alcohol distribution license at the Outback Station. Where is the date?
The Outback Station, which is where?
That's above, um, Horse Ranch Hill.
For Service Route thirty one twenty five, it says on the bottom of the.
That is for.
That's, uh, it's above Horse Ranch Hill, it's up Fort Rock area.
September sixth.
Second through the.
Okay.
So. Yeah, it's okay.
Where are you seeing that?
On the application.
On the application, what is she?
Oh, okay.
O L C C has already approved this, and Sheriff has no problems.
And the sheriff's not gonna.
Has no problems.
Well, I knew there was a big event that went on up there last weekend, um, to make.
It was like a one up for community, it was concerned by their supplement.
Yeah, yeah, that was the Clampers, E Clampers Vitus had their big shindig up at the. Uh, I'm not kidding, I make up the name, um, unless they even announce it. Um, so, and then they actually erected a big monument.
They had it where, huh, where did they wind it up?
They had it at the Horse Ranch, they did not do it in the town side of Fort Rock, and then, um, but they did put up a mo- a monument in Fort Rock outside the Grange. Talking about the history of Fort Rock and everything, and it's actually a really nice, I got a picture of it on my phone, it's a really nice little monument. And, uh, the Grange was happy with it and everyone, so.
Well, maybe they spooked over some.
I'm hoping so.
Yeah.
There were some comments on social media about a dying town or something like that, and some of the locals weren't very happy about it. But I, I think they need to work out some leadership issues, um, and P R. But anyway, this doesn't look like it's for that event, because this is for September second, and I was just curious on the date.
Well, that's Labor Day weekend.
Yep.
So, I hope they have, with that many people, I hope they have a plan for fire. You know, just making sure that we've got that many people there, that we've got a fire safe area that they're gonna have.
Thing is, is that if they're doing it on forest, are they doing it on forest ground? It doesn't say, they just say what road they're on.
Um.
If they're doing it on forest ground, we have to have a permit from them, so.
It's like that Deer Ranch that they have there.
Oh, they have a deer.
There's a private ranch back there at Outback Station, and they have a bunch of different buildings out there, so. I think we've actually approved a few things out there at Outback Station in the past, temporarily.
I think they got the eclipse thing.
Yeah, I think you're right, during that big eclipse. Okay, uh, no more questions on that for me, that was good. So, next up and last item for just, uh, oh, I did have a quick question, so I don't forget. EMS, are we having a meeting with, on the EMS thing tomorrow at eight o'clock or eight thirty? It's on my calendar. I got an invite, um, I think it was from B U for tomorrow, uh, C V EMS meeting.
Oh, that's very old.
Okay, okay.
But no, they're, they're, there's a new, they're going for the next election cycle.
Okay, so I can, I can just ignore that then, there's no, they're, they're not coming to talk to us at anything or anything tomorrow, even outside of maybe.
No, we were talking about having a hearing up there, if they were going to make them made, but they're not.
Okay, yeah, all right, so it's not for a hearing or anything, and they're not coming for a discussion with us offline or anything, okay.
The first hearing will be November seventeen.
Sounds good, okay, I'll scratch that, I just had a quick question on it for tomorrow, because I didn't want to conflict with the regular session tomorrow. Um, the, uh, next and last item here, legal counsel R F P discussion. So, we have a memorandum of understanding, uh, that was signed by the previous board, uh, back in two thousand eighteen. And, uh. The M O U can be ended upon ninety days written notice by either party. So at least this one has an exit clause in it. Um. So what's the discussion? I guess.
So are we gonna put it out for R F P, and then these guys can put in again too, which I have no problem. I encourage them to do, so. We just haven't had an R F Ps for five years, no, four years, I don't know, four years, so.
We haven't had any open discussion among the board, you know, about this, so just kind of getting that feeling for where everyone's at as far as putting out for. Um, looking at what our options are for legal counsel, I'm comfortable with moving forward with an R F P. Uh, not necessarily giving Mr. Bailey the notice yet, as we don't know. Where.
If, if he gets the R F P.
Yeah.
We, we'll just renew this.
Yeah.
And we, so.
But do we wanna?
I, I wanna, I wanna discuss it, I wanna, I wanna put it, personally put it out and just see what's out there, and. Go from there.
I think it's more than fair, it's been, uh, three years now, going on three years.
It's a whole new board.
It's a new board, um, one thing to consider is, you know, the cost, it's probably gonna go up.
Potentially.
True.
I don't know, let's start union negotiations this fall.
The thing is though, is if we put an R F P, and what's that process take, a month?
Yeah, at least.
Then if Jim's outfit doesn't get it, we have to give him ninety days, and so we're looking at four months from today before we. If we hire somebody else, and so. Oh, I think the union negotiation should be over along the way.
Well, so, last year, union negotiations took over a year.
Yeah.
But I don't think.
We're hoping to change that this year.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen again, so, which one of us was the union guy? So I'm, I have full confidence that Barry can do it in under a year.
We shall see, I hope so too.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, how's it going?
Are you guys having a meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Will I be part of it?
Nope, I just have a question for James when he's done.
Okay, I'll come down and see you.
Okay.
Hi, Dr. Cornell.
Hi, Emma.
So.
Hi there.
Before we leave this conversation, when was the last time an R F P, do we know, was done before twenty eighteen?
We haven't done a full R F P, I believe, was over ten years, maybe, maybe fifteen.
Maybe. So it's more than fair, yeah, okay.
So, do you know, or do we have any history as to why this one was done on September eighteen? Because Jim Bailey's been our legal counsel for Lake County for a long time, and yet this one was done. Was it updated on fees or not on the cost?
No, just the renewal of the contract.
Just the renewal of the contract. But.
We don't do this every year.
Was the previous one perhaps done on an annual basis, or, and then they just decided to put this one, say, it will begin September fifth. And will end upon ninety days written notice, so it just keeps going, was that what maybe the board was doing in two thousand eighteen?
I could speculate, but I'll research that for you, if you mind.
Yeah. Uh, I'm just curious what they had in place before, yeah. Um. But yeah, I'd, I'd like to know what our options are, um, Jim will obviously be with us for, um, at the very, at very least, four more months. You know, and that, you know, will take us some time if we do decide to put in for an R F P tomorrow. Uh, do we have this for action expiration today, or just discussion, um?
I think it's just discussion.
Just to start the process.
Yeah. Okay.
Please not go through.
Cause I don't know if Jay has everything ready to put it out for an R F P, or do you do that, or?
And maybe just consensus from us that he might know what's holding.
I don't know, I guess it's a consensus.
Copy, copy. So, so we just pretty much think consensus, that we can put it off for an R F P?
Yep.
I'm good with that, so.
Consensus from me.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see what our options are.
Yep.
Alrighty, um, that does it for that, and we'll move on to our, uh, timed item, we're pretty much right on time. Dr. Cornell, good morning, um, good to have you with us.
Good morning, um, I, uh, I can't start my video until the host starts it. Austin, nice to be here though.
Okay.
Okay, now I've got it, let's, oh, no, that's not it.
Hang on.
So, um. Anyway, I'll do it without the video for now, um, and if you turn it on, I'll, I'll turn it on on my end, um, here as well.
Okay, I think Melanie, Melanie's working on it.
So. Oh. Okay, so nice to see you all, and, um, I hope everybody stays safe out there, it's, uh, it's been quite a time. Uh, for a Casey, so, let's see, let's go back to the beginning. K C C had a contract out of district with Lake County for this year, but that con- contract was never, um. I mean, we had a contract signed, but it was never fulfilled, and in fact, the contract, uh, the year before, nineteen nineteen and twenty twenty. Was, um, uh, uh, ended on June twenty twenty, uh, if not before, uh, that everyone was laid off, uh, was furloughed before that. So, um, so we haven't really had a contract out of district that, um. Uh, that has, uh, provided, uh, support services for co- college, uh, and higher education here in Lake County for a year and a half. Now, we have been very lucky, um, in that Michael Carter, the superintendent at the high school. Now, we have been very lucky, um, in that Michael Carter, the superintendent at the high school. I mean, at the school district, the Lake County State District seven, he has, um, really worked hard to make a partnership. With KCC, with Plymouth Community College, so that there are some college services still in the county. That's, um. That's a big, a big plus, a- and I really, um. I really, uh, can't say enough about, uh, um, Michael Carter's efforts on, um. On the behalf of college, uh, senior students in in Lake County. Uh, and I have a list of services that are provided, um. Uh, by that, uh, partnership, if you're interested, um. Uh, so, so that's kind of where we're at. The they have a memorandum of understanding. Their partnership does not constitute a contract out of district. Um, a contract out of district would require a budget, um, between KCC. Um, with the county's contribution added into the budget. Now, I know that, um, the college advisory board has, um, we have sent you, the first recommendation was not to pay. The, um, the cash, uh, match for the contract in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. And as far as I understand, you've taken our recommendation and not put in the twenty five thousand to KCC.
Right.
Um. You can tell me if I'm wrong.
No, no, you're you're absolutely right. You did not, you did not pay that.
But but there was. Okay, so that was our recommendation because we were not getting the services, um, that we, uh. Had specified in the contract and one of those, the main portion of those services that we're missing. Are the, um, is the, uh, is a person, um, for for us of the advisory board. Uh, we all agree that having a dedicated person of who can, um, support the needs of adult students in Lake County. Is vital, um, we really need that person and I will say that at the high school, there is a person. Tara Counts, who's been, um, and who has provided me with this list of services and there are quite a lot of services. That are available, but for adult students, it's all really referrals. Um, she can connect people to KCC's offices, um, to their programs, uh, there are Zoom meetings for. Ac- academic advising and financial aid, um, and, uh, she can even help them. Uh, through, uh, I mean, she can put them into a Zoom or, um, or orientation. They can get tutoring online, they can take courses online, there are certificate programs, all that kind of stuff can be done. With the help of the high school, mostly in referrals. There's no computer lab for adult students, there's no. Student files for adult students, they're on, you know, they have to, um. You know, there are individuals who are getting some help from the high school counselor to, um. To, uh, you know, to contact KCC and to get the services that they need. That's been very beneficial and I think of and and according to Tara Counts, a few adult students have taken her up on that. And the college advisory board may even, um, I I've offered to work with Tara on a press release for that. So that our adult students know about those services. Now, not all adult students can access those services if they have a record of some kind, so they may not be permitted to go into the high school. Um, the Innovations Learning Center that was part of the Daly Middle School is still there, um. But in kind of a limbo because, um. Uh, well, because everybody's gone, uh, I mean, all the people that used to, uh. Staff it because we had a a support coordinator, plus a couple of tutors and a couple of part-time staff. That we were able to maintain over at the Innovations Learning Center for specifically adult students. And, uh, there were a handful of high school students who would come over there as well, but it was primarily intended for people who were. Um, needing services outside of of high school. Um, and that was funded, uh, initially by, uh, grant money through, um, Lake County Resource Initiatives. And the C O D, um, in terms of, you know, combining our efforts, the C O D provided the staff and the grant money provided a lot of the equipment. And now we have a memorandum, now they're, now L L C R I is no longer sort of. I mean, we're, uh, uh, so where we stand now is L C R I is still available. But the Innovations Learning Center is, um. Is kind of in hiatus. Oh, hello, here I am. Um, so, so that's kind of where we're at. We don't have a a dedicated support person. We don't really have, well, we don't have an office, we don't have a computer lab, we do have. A partnership with the high school that's providing some services for adult students and we think that's very beneficial. Um, however, we don't think it's enough, uh, from the advisory board perspective, um. One, uh, estimate wa- uh, from the coordinator, the former coordinator, Cheryl Lanero. Was that twenty five percent of our students speak another language, um, and, you know, struggle a little bit with, um. With accessing services in English and doing classes in English and they need that extra personal help. Um, and so there's that, uh, that consideration as well. Another thing we've lost as a county over the years are GED prep classes, um, so people who wanna go to college, they have to have a high school diploma. If they don't, they can get a GED, but they usually need a lot of preparation for that. And again, we don't have those prep classes. There are, again, online classes with KCC. But I'm not entirely sure that there is a person coordinating those. It's possible. Um, John Callahan, uh, down in the W I O A office, uh, offers, uh, the CASIS, uh, testing. Which is part of the GED program, but there's no actual GED prep classes here in Lake County. So students would have to navigate to online classes and and somehow. Uh, be, uh, motivated enough to succeed in an online platform for GED, which I think is very difficult, especially when there's ESL as well. So we're, we're, I would say we're in a, uh, position of. Minimal, minimal services being offered right now in the county. And I know you guys are, uh, supporters of education, so I just, um, I know you're feeling feeling this too. Uh, but we're kind of in a a high, we're we're kind of in a a an unusual situation, um. I noticed on the agenda, it said HECC update, uh, and that's the, uh, Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
Correct.
S- uh, which is governed by the Office of Community Colleges and Workforce Development. And, um. There are rules, one of the rules is the contract out of district has to have a budget, that's why we have no contract out of district. And then there, I know you've gone through the process of setting up the tax district with North Lake County. That, as you know, has a lot of procedural steps and has to be coordinated with the Higher Education Coordinating Commission.
Do you know where that's at, Emma?
The North Lake?
Yeah. With HECC.
Uh, I thought, um, well, I thought it was a done deal and already approved by the Senate, but am I wrong about that? I know it had made it to the committee.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, it did get approved, okay. Alright.
I think it was approved in May, in May, I believe, um, but I'm not, I'm not. Uh, I I didn't check that today, but I I'm pretty sure that's 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 a done deal, so you have. And if it was approved in May, I'm not really sure what the the timeline on that is, so I'm not sure when the tax money starts to flow to the college.
Right.
And that's about a hundred thousand dollars, I believe, um, of tax money that will go to KCC.
Right.
And so that brings me to our second recommendation, which is you gotta, you you really have to push KCC, or maybe you don't have to push them, maybe you just have to ask. But you should have a board member on the Board of Education at at Plymouth Community College. If we had had a board member with the contract out of district, we would have known more about what was going on, what their concerns were. We think that they wildly overestimated our cost, part of that is we, um, kind of, um. That they, anyway, well, a lot of things might have happened, uh, in a in a more, uh, in in less of a. We would have been less blindsided if we'd had a board member and I would, um, that's a strong recommendation from the advisory board. Jack Thompson from the E S D says, push for a board member, get that board member on the Board of Education because money is involved.
Yeah.
Has has anybody s- heard from KCC about that?
Crickets.
Crickets, yeah, that's that's.
Yeah, those crickets.
So, huh. I want, so so that's a question, I guess, of if we can help you, like, if you would like. The advisory board to work with you all to write a letter, um. That says, we need a, we need a Board of Education member, I'm happy to to do that with you.
Okay.
Um, maybe a written, uh, notice is, uh, something that KCC would be more likely to respond to.
Put it in writing, make it a special.
So I would, I would encourage. I think it's gotta be in writing and you'll, I mean, you have, you're, you, they're getting a hundred thousand or more from Lake County. That's a significant amount of money and you deserve to be at the table.
Absolutely.
So, um, so yeah, feel free to contact me if you want the advisory board, um, to sign on to that letter as well.
Yeah, I think, uh.
Or if you want, um.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you want, um, uh. To collaborate on the la- I I'm not really sure what to put in the letter letter either at the moment, but I'm sure there's legal language from the, uh. From the chapters, uh, from this, the legislation governing the, um. Uh, I didn't see that there was an absolute requirement that you be allowed, you know, given a board member. I haven't noted, I I I just looked at some of the legislation. I just feel like it's, um.
Well, we don't have to pull the requirement even if there was one.
Yeah, you deserve to be at the table.
Yeah, no, yeah, we don't have to even cite a requirement even if there was one. We just have to explain, you know, like, just as you did and articulate.
Mm-hmm.
That, you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars of our, uh, county residents that are being contributed to KCC and we think that we need to be at the table. Especially being that the, one of the reasons why we're in this predicament as far as the out of district contract is because they violate, they're they're they were in breach of contract. And that's why you guys recommended that we didn't pay, so, you know, I think, and we could have avoided a lot of that if we were at the table. And so, we just have to wait for it on those.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, well, and I think that KCC has got a lot of. We have a lot of trust issues now with them and. We've got a pretty big chasm to bridge over and so, um. You know, with the loss of our education center and all of that, nobody there. It's, and then they didn't tell us that it's coming. So. I just have some real trust issues there, so it'd be really nice to have somebody on the the board, um.
Yeah. You know, that's a really good point, that that's an excellent way for KCC to start building back trust with Lake County. Um, I think that's, I think we're all feeling that a little bit. We want that good partnership with KCC, we really admire. The, uh, hi- the school district for stepping up and working with KCC to try to make some services happen, but we do not want. KCC to, um. Uh, well, for instance, with the advisory board, we were. Um, we were on the verge of of being told, oh, now we'll we'll set up a meeting with, uh, Dr. Gutierrez. And we'll have a nice conversation about all the things that we can do for you. And because the advisory board has kind of been down that path, we, uh, wrote a little, uh, written, uh. Uh, uh, statement back saying the advisory board. Does not believe that, you know, wants or, but the advisory board wants a contract out of district, but one that provides a person.
Yeah.
And a budget, a clear budget. And so, when I said, when we said to the college, yes, we'll we'll meet with, uh, Dr. Gutierrez and, um, and and plan for the future. But we want to know that there is going to be a person, a s- you know, a support person. Supported by the budget that we create and that's when we got shut down and told, no, there's no person, um, not this year. And, you know, it was very, uh, clear that they were not gonna provide a person this year, so. So that's kind of where we're at, it's, uh, at least they were clear about that and and, but I did feel like we could have had endless meetings talking about things. And if we hadn't been very direct and put it in writing, this is what we want. That KCC would have kind of led us along for a while. They're pretty good at, at, um. You know, at, well, uh, what can I say, a little bit of public relations, a little bit of leading us on. We wanna be very direct, very clear, put it in writing, that seems to get the the best response. Not necessarily the response we want, but at least we get answers.
Yeah, we gotta know where we are at and we have to know what exactly a KCC is willing to do as far as back us up with what our wishes are and and they weren't. Willing to provide us the person and like you also underscored is the the budget, the budget would had. Uh, fixed costs for it that had gone up every single year quite a bit, but then they also had other costs outside of the actual approved budget such as. Um. Uh, internet connection and everything else and it's like, no, all that needs to be within the approved budget and you can't be just putting on all these admin fees and everything else. On the outside of it and we gotta know exactly what the costs are. So, I mean, I remember those meetings, it took us several months just to get an actual number of what they thought the costs were and what they thought was fair.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, and another one of my concerns.
Yeah. Yeah, just to put that in context, our budget. I was just gonna say, our budget was like a hundred and thirty seven thousand, no, I think that was the proposed budget, maybe it was a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was well within the range of your twenty percent match, cause the budget has to also. Uh, take into account that you have a twenty percent match, so it was around a hundred twenty thou- twenty five thousand, maybe we were pushing for a hundred and thirty seven thousand, I think was what. Was being pushed for, which might have raised your amount a tiny bit, but, um, but what they said we were costing that was three hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was so wildly out of, uh, you know, out of what we knew of our budget was that. That that's why I feel strongly that you really need a board member on the Board of Education over there. And I know a couple of the board members over there, they're good people, I think it's a good board, it's just that sometimes when they're trying to do budget cuts. Um, people start to find places that they can inflate to to get to that million, you know, million point five budget cut that they're they were trying to get to. Um. So, so that's our first recommendation, push in writing, make sure to get answers in writing. From KCC about that Board of Education member. I personally think that you should, you know, that you could. Ask for a person in Lake County, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars. That's, you know, anyway, that's not really, um, I mean, I guess as the advis- as the advisory board, I think. Um, that, you know, we've we've all concluded that having a person dedicated to Lake County students is what works best. So that would, um, that would be maybe a secondary push as to see how you're gonna spend that, how KCC is gonna spend that money in North North Lake, but try to get somebody on the board. And then our second, uh, recor- or third recommendation to you all, I know we've been throwing a lot of things at you. Um, the third recommendation is, uh, to, um. To notify the Higher Education Coordinating Commission that. Um, the county chose not to pay the, uh, contract out of district because we were not. Being given those services that were required by the contract. Um, we think, as the advisory board, we just think that's probably a courtesy, also maybe a legal. Uh, uh, notice of some kind that just says, we know what's going on, we've talked about this, we're in communication with the advisory board. The advisory board is required by the legislative, uh, rules governing, um, governing these things. And we just think that if you notify HECC in a, an official way, um, that that kind of shows that you know that you're. Uh, following the rules.
Correct.
Uh, just, uh, on another note, I've talked with the, um. I kind of forget who she is, she, Donna Luelling, I believe is the director. At the Oregon Co- Community Colleges Workforce Development that governs the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, which is HECC. And so, um, the OCC W F D, Oregon Co- Community Colleges Workforce Development. And so um the OCC W F D, Oregon Co- Community Colleges Workforce Development, governs the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. And Donna Llewelling is the uh Director who works with uh the different colleges. She was great to talk to. Um uh myself and the former uh Coordinator of the I L C and of K C C Services here in Lake County, Cheryl Yarrow had a um a a meeting with Donna to discuss our situation and what we should do. And she said that um that it's up to us basically, but that it needs to all go through HEC. Um which is kind of funny, right? But um because we all feel like we have been going through HEC, but but um but so she um she said it's because there's rules and so if we wanted another contract out of district with a different college, that's certainly possible, that's always possible when you're in these contracts um that you can change colleges. The advisory committee right now is feeling like, well, what if, you know, K C C will come back from this budget crisis and be our partner again? We're we're hoping that that's the case, but like as um as you said, we do have some trust issues. And so they need to show us that we can trust them. Uh you know, and um uh so we could have a contract out of district, maybe eventually with K C C or with another college. The other option, of course, is to try to form a tax district. Um and I noticed in that legislation, there's also, and I'm sure you've been through some of this, um there's also the possibility of a boundary change. But maybe it's not possible to just extend the boundary down here because there's separate tax districts, so. So that's probably a taxing issue, but um but we could try for a s- a a tax district in Southern Lake County. Um that would take a while and it would also take a petition to HEC. It would all have to be sort of coordinated by the Higher Education Coordinating Commission. Um and it's also a political uh question, are we, you know, is Lake County ready to uh vote for a taxing district for the college? And it's especially awkward now since there's no services. So so we're we're kind of at a point where we're like hmm and maybe it's, I don't know. I'm I'm looking for guidance from 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 uh from the county as well, uh the advisory board is and um and at the same time, we're we're um we're trying to consider our options and not burn our bridges. So uh it's it's a little tricky. Um I'd be curious to know what you all think. Um I think I've told you mostly, the biggest thing the advisory board was recommending right now was push for that board member. That'll tell us a lot. And then we might um try to have a meeting with K C C as the uh um school year starts and just try to get a sense of are they even you know, what is what is it that they're willing to um to do for us? Do they think we're always going to be too expensive? Um is I guess the question for a person, you know, sure, they can come here and, you know, send people in and out and do things at the high school, but to actually support a staff here is is uh, you know, requires that budget. And I know the county's willing to contribute, so you know, it's a little frustrating.
Yeah, you know, Emma, that if Michael Carter wouldn't have got involved, nothing wouldn't have been done yet. I mean, nobody from K C C has contacted us saying, hey, we're sorry. We wanna make this up, we wanna start building that relationship again. Um if the north end hadn't already um we hadn't already started the process before the the COVID fiasco happened. And I if I had the foresight to see how we were treated um afterwards, I would have never supported the taxing district there. And so for a taxing district to happen down here on the south end, until we get those trust issues built back up, there's no way that I will support that. So. I mean, I I definitely.
That's really good to know. Um.
I definitely want a higher education here in Lake County, but I want them to be square with us, do what they say they're gonna do and go from there, so.
Yeah, I'm feeling, I know that, yeah, that's 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 the way we feel about that.
I have the.
Yeah.
I have I have the same feelings as Commissioner Lawrence and uh what, just so I'm clear in some of your previous discussion there, you talked about this year. What do you mean by this year? Is it a is it a school calendar year? Is it uh the county budget year? Is it uh a calendar year? What 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 are we talking about in here?
Let's see, I think the um contracts out of district were based on this school year.
School year, so for this coming year.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and is that right? Yeah, I think that's that's right. So then in nineteen nine, in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we lost the summer, basically. So you pay for summer without services. But in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we lost the entire school year or in terms of
Right.
direct support services. Um so so that's that's why we just recommended um to not pay that uh second half of the contract out of district. And the fact that K C C isn't contacting you is probably because they're in breach of contract. And I don't know what that means at the state level, but they probably don't want to talk to you until, you know, they can figure out um, you know, what their position is. And it's awkward for them because they've been talking to us and kind of trying to convince us as the advisory board that what's going on at the high school is enough. And I think they would have been happy if you'd have thrown in money to that effort. Um and we would have sort of pretended that, oh, now or we would have renegotiated, we could have renegotiated the contract out of district to say, oh, we don't need a person, we just need support from referrals. But we were never willing to uh take that position and we made that clear to the college that that's not what, you know, what we're paying for.
Yeah, no, we wanted in person, we were we we continue to advocate for that in person, uh that that individual that'll be onsite. Um but we have said as a board in the past, in the last year and a half, that we were willing to renegotiate even a higher price besides the twenty five thousand. And uh well, you could go all the way up to twenty eight thousand. Um we were willing to go renegotiate if that's what was needed. But um and I but I think you're right in terms of the fact, I think it is awkward for them. I think it's definitely awkward for Chip uh too because he's living on what he can say as well.
Mm-hmm, I agree. I I think they're all, you know, he's he's a good man too and and just trying his best, but it's 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 a bigger, it's a big bureaucracy when you get to that you know, budget over there. Um that's that's why you want somebody on the board.
Right.
Um. Now, we have uh spoken at one point, uh James, I remember we you'd mentioned that you had a grant writer and I don't know, the advisory board um was saying, well, we need to figure out, you know, what we what, you know, what what it is that we're shooting for. Are we trying to get equipment? Are we trying to get a person? Are we trying to, you know, get back what we what we used to have? Is there a college involved? We have a lot of questions still, but um but James, you did um or Commissioner Williams, uh you did uh mention that uh that there was a grant writer that the county uses. And so I'm wondering if as the advisory board considers this issue and maybe comes up with a plan of some kind to put some services possibly back in the uh Innovations Learning Center, which is a negotiation with the school district, um because of course they they have needs too. As well as a negotiation with some nonprofit like Lake County Resource Initiatives or even the E S D, they're all willing. I think all the 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 players are willing, um and we just uh would need to consider what kind of a grant might help us. But is that something that we could uh pursue in the meantime or would it be better to um try to decide whether or not we're going to go forward with K C C or pursue another college? Uh just kind of throwing it out there, there's there's different options and the speed at which we pursue different options, you know, I guess it's a you know, it's 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 a matter of what's the priority.
Well, I I think, you know, we could give, based on your uh recommendations, I mean, we should definitely probably give K C C written uh note and notify them, you know, why we didn't pay and why we're not paying and follow through with that. And just push on a little bit is to, you know, like, hey, we want to get back into a contract with you, but this is what we're expecting and this is what we need from you. Um and if they're not willing to do that, then yeah, we should definitely look at another college, but I don't have a problem pursuing, you know, some grant opportunities if we need to do that in the meantime as well. I mean, if we can make it work with K C C, that's what my preference would be, simply because they already have such a strong preference uh presence in Lake County with the taxing district in the north end going over the close proximity to Lakeview. Um we have had other colleges in the past, but if we can make that relationship work and get back into a into a an agreement that we're all good with, that's the ideal scenario. Um but um.
I I agree with you and that is the ideal scenario. And I will say that Tara Counts over at the high school um has said that K C C staff have been very prompt in um uh in um offering services and uh um and and, you know, responding to calls, all that kind of stuff. So so that's encouraging. Um and also setting up Zoom meetings so that students can have online services. I think K C C has finally taken that step into the twenty first century so that our students don't have to drive over there just to meet with a financial aid counselor, for instance.
Yeah.
Now they can go on the Zoom, meet with the financial aid counselors, so much better for our students. So so James, I mean, so Commissioner Williams, what you're saying is that K C C would be the preference and so if we set up that meeting to talk to K C C, try to figure out where they stand now. I know they've gotten some federal money too and maybe their budget's feeling a little better. Um and and that we're still willing to do a C O D with them. Um we also have the option of pursuing other colleges. And you're saying that we have the option of of making use of the grant writer that the county employed or the county county contracts with if we come up with some kind of plan for, say, an independent contractor. Have I got that right?
Yeah, I don't see why not. Yeah, and based on your recommendations, we just start the conversation with the K C C, you know, kind of get it we kickstart it back up again with that noti- notification of this is why we we didn't pay. Um and uh we want to get a a C O D back in place with you guys. We want to have a good relationship with K C C because of the close proximity and the presence that they already have in Lake County in the north end us advocating for them in the first place to have that transition take place with the taxing district. We want to make that work and whatever their response is to that, if they don't want to um if they if they're not willing to put their best foot forward and work on doing a C O D, then it's not worth us pers- pursuing the third rec- or the second recommendation that you had to us, which is getting a board member on their Board of Education. Um and then at least we know where we stand and we can go look for another college.
So speaking of other colleges, what what other options do we have?
Schimecata? Treasure Valley.
They haven't already been here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Tre- Treasure Valley, we know dropped the ball on the north end and so what what do we have?
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. I I think there's there's different community colleges. We don't have one in mind at the moment. Pro Community College used to be here a long time ago. Um that they're more or less on sou- you know, they're in Southern Oregon, so that's nice. Um Schimecata does a lot of work online and I think they're a good school.
That was one that Senator Carter recommended.
Sometimes, uh yeah, that that Schimecata is an an interesting uh one.
I I'm I'm a graduate, so.
Those are the other one, the Pro Community and Schimecata would be.
I love that.
Okay. Thought it was hard on.
Yeah. You are, you're right.
School of Hard Knocks, wait a second.
Well, I have my masters in the School of Hard Knocks.
Oh, gotcha, okay, all right, but he graduated from Schimecata.
Oh, and Commissioner Williams, you were saying to write a K C C, you were gonna write K C C, tell them why you didn't pay. Make sure you talk to your lawyer, you know, when you're working on that letter, but um but what I was saying was was um to uh that you should send maybe a brief uh or you know, it doesn't have to be a long explanation, I don't think. Hey, the heck, the Higher Education Coordinating Commission already knows that the county feels that that K C C breached its contract, so because I talked to the director, but if you send them a little written notice, it just shows the Higher Education Coordinating Commission and again, talk to your attorney. Um but it shows them that you're a county who wants to follow the rules and wants help in making something good happen. Um as I said, Donald Llewelling is willing to help us negotiate a new contract if we um if we get the sense that the college is ready to provide uh the kind of services that we want for any college. So they're willing to help us, but I just feel like our recommendation was that you let them know that, yes, you didn't pay last year because the college didn't provide the services in the contract. That's the I don't I don't think these kinds of rules uh lead to penalties, but um but I think it's important for the county to show that it wants to follow them.
Agree. So why don't I do this then?
I do think it's also a really great idea to 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 tell K C C, whether you tell them that this is why we didn't pay or you just tell them, hey, we expect you to provide services next time we have a contract out of district with you. Um that might be legally a little less uh, you know, challenging or or whatever, you know, just just putting them on notice with a written uh uh quest- you know, with in writing is 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 your best bet. But I yeah.
Um how about?
Does that make sense? I I.
Yeah, no, that's good. Um how about this then? What I'll do is uh I will write up a draft letter today. I can share it with you and legal counsel and and, you know, any other input that the board or the commissioners want to have. And then we will review that tomorrow as an addition on our tomorrow's tomorrow's agenda. And uh we'll go ahead and approve that letter, get it signed and does that sound good?
That sounds great. Jeff, be happy to look at that.
Okay. All right.
Thank you so much. That was very.
I really appreciate you all uh take taking this time for higher education in Lake County. It's it's really great to have your support. The advisory committee works hard to try to give you um our best recommendations, so thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet. Really quick, just so I I think I have them all written down, but the three recommendations that you are bringing to us. Um I want to make sure I don't miss anything. Um you want to, we want to let them know that we want to get back into, well, the first recommendation going way back was that we don't pay. Um we did that, um and then we want to get back into a contract out of district. Um and then uh we want a board member on the education board and that we need to write them a letter stating some of these things and why we chose not to pay. And uh and that, you know, we want to, we want to put our best foot forward though, we want to get back into a C O D. Is that right?
Okay, so well, sort of, um our 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 first one, don't pay, about that. Second recommendation was that you want a board member in North Lake for North Lake County.
Okay, board member for North Lake County.
Uh on the Board of Education of K C C. Right, that's that's a separate issue. And then the letter saying why you didn't pay, I don't think K C C needs to have your explanation for why you didn't pay. I think what they need to know is that, well, since we do not have a contract out of district, we're interested in whether you ever want to have a contract with us, something a little more direct and a little less confession.
Right.
You don't have to say why you didn't pay to K C C, they know very well why you didn't pay.
Exactly.
And um and if they ever want to challenge. And um, and if they ever want to challenge you, they'll do it legally, right? And they haven't, so I would not get into that that thorny ticket. I would just say, since we don't have a contract with you, do you ever want to have a contract with us? And then the person, the people that you want to notify or the agency that you want to notify that you didn't pay is the Higher Education Coordinating Commission, that would be a separate letter. And for them, yeah, we could say, here's the language from the contract that was not fulfilled, there's a whole section about the support coordinator, this is why we didn't pay.
Got it.
That's what I would do. And and if you um, yeah, so that's that's the two different, two different things. And I think that would be great uh on to both write KCC and write HEC. And get that board, uh you'll have to write KCC about the board member. Maybe that's two different letters too, you could start to see even if they're going to give you a board member. And and let them come at you saying, oh, but please, can we have a contract in Southern Lake?
Yeah, because I'm I'm not a hundred percent sold on.
We'll have to use all our negotiating.
I'm not a hundred percent sold on wanting a contract with KCC again. That's why I want to think about other options. I mean, they kind of showed their hand already, have made no attempt to fix it. I'm not necessarily sold on entering into another contract, so. So, but he's gonna.
Well, maybe the best bet is then to write the letter to ask for the board member on the Board of Education and see how they respond. Don't ask them for a contract out of district right off the bat because they haven't offered us one that works, you know, that we find acceptable. They they kept saying no person is available and you're not going to get a person. That's that's not what we're looking for. So I think you're right, uh Commissioner, I I think uh start, see if they will earn our trust by putting that person on the Board of Education. Uh, the advisory board has quite agreed that that is very important for Lake County.
Yeah, you know, I know uh Michael Carter's worked on some things too, he's trying to make it happen this year. I don't want to cross him up either, uh because really, the ball is kind of in KCC's court. They need to show that they can come through. And if they can't come through with Mr. Carter's kind of helped more than bent over backwards to make it happen, then yeah, we do need to look at other options, so.
Okay.
Good, so I I would just say, letter requesting a board member on North Lake, for North Lake because you deserve it, and a letter to to HEC saying, hey, we had a contract, here's what the contract said. The college dropped the contract services and that's why we didn't pay. Just let the Higher Education Coordinating Commission know that you're working with them as as the advisory board is. We've given them verbal notice, but this is just a follow-up from the county.
Okay, so we're looking at two letters, basically. Make sure that I sent out those two things out.
Yeah. Yeah, one re- one requesting the board member, one notifying HEC.
Okay.
And the advisory board will see if KCC is going to offer us anything more than they offered us over the summer. We'll have that meeting with them and we'll report back to you on that. I understand your concerns and we feel the same uh need to uh regain trust with the KCC. We feel a little bit burned ourselves, you know, a- as the advisory board. But um, we know there's good people over there and we'll work to see where they're at and if they plan to come back to us. And then we'll also keep our uh feelers out for other colleges and perhaps even start exploring some of those other options. If so, certainly if we find out that KCC has no plans to um to provide what we really need here in Lake County. Because we could do it with another college and we could also do it with an independent contractor that serves all the colleges. Those are the the kind of the bigger that, I mean, that's a different kind of option, but it's certainly a a possibility for Lake County. We do a lot of things um in a different kind of way. So it's nice to have the college behind you. Um, but it's also possible that we could um figure out another another way to do it.
Alrighty. I'm good. Any other questions, thoughts? Emma, thank you so much, Dr. Cornell. Uh, really appreciate your time and updating us.
Thank you.
Really good information and uh we'll try and get this moving, so.
I appreciate you all so much, thank you. And thank you for everything that you're doing, not just for higher education, but for Lake County, all these evacuations going on and all this craziness. You guys are holding it down and keeping it um together uh with all the collaborative efforts to uh sustain and and improve Lake County. Really appreciate everything you do, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okidok, um.
And thanks, Melanie.
All right, yeah. Take care. So um.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. We'll go ahead and uh, is there any uh liaison updates today? Um, department updates?
We want to talk briefly about Schoed or?
Oh, uh, yeah, it's going on Friday.
The meeting.
Schoed, board meeting on Friday.
Yeah, so, um. Denise Stillwell, we hired her as our next Schoed Director. She came over and visited with you guys when. Congressman Benz was here. Um, I think she'll be really, really good. Looking forward to seeing what she'll do. This will be her first school meeting, so she was related with this. So, um, changing the subject. Airport was still having trouble getting fuel, stops came through from again, through for us. You got fuel in there for the aircraft. We have plow helicopters there plus all the C planes. Then they got another load coming pretty soon, so I don't know exactly what date that is. Fire laid down a little bit last night compared to what we thought it was gonna do. We're expecting high winds today, starting at noon for twelve hours. What else? Uh, reutilizing the county fairgrounds. And I think that's been a good thing. There's a hundred and twenty-eight structures in the evacuation zone. When you hit a certain number with the state, you get more resources. And so we've hit that. They're bringing two more teams, I don't know if they go the structured protection teams.
Task forces.
Yeah, two task force teams for the cottonwood road. And um, as soon as this wind event is over with and we can get a handle on it, they'll probably get rid of some of those structured teams. So. I don't know what other things I have, that's all I've worked on last.
Chris, I really have a whole lot, I, my liaisons are pretty quiet right now. I've got a few things working on with mental health and Jake and I have been talking about some things and.
Um, so, speaking of that.
Yeah.
The, we're gonna have a meeting with the.
Oh, district.
Board.
Instead, um, did you guys fill out the new and latest poll?
So I'm not, I'm not gonna be here on that date.
So they they sent a brand new poll that had a whole bunch of dates in it all the way through September.
Oh, okay, mine only had September third, so I'll.
I think you can scroll. Or you push an arrow and you go into September month and it has added dates.
Okay, copy that. But that's still going, though?
Yes, still going, there was a bunch of dates, there was two to three weeks in September that they put a bunch of dates in it. So, um. And I filled that out and sent it back to to her, so. I I know what you're talking about though, it's, you only see the one data. But I think there, you can scroll or you can push an arrow and go to the next one. When they do the poll. But other than that, I don't have any. Good?
Yep.
Alrighty, um, we'll get everyone out of here for lunch. Uh, the time is five to twelve. Thank you, everyone, and we'll see you tomorrow at ten o'clock.